Before that, I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 25th Committee of the Whole Meeting. Special welcome to those in the room and guests who are paying attention online. Our councillor who remains away offline, online. And to our three presenters who will be making a presentation later on. So first item is to call the meeting to order. Prior to approving the agenda, are there any additions to the agenda? Mr. Virchell.
Mr. Chairperson, we had the. Okay, it looks like we might just one sec. Tash can't get in. So maybe they're having issues. So we had the skate park was originally intended to present and they didn't make the deadline Friday, but then they've been trying to get back in. So we're anticipating having them, but we'll put them after the, after the paid parking presenters. So if we can get them in, they'll just present there won't. We've asked them not to ask any questions today because they're late, so they will be simply presenting today. If we can get them in, so that would be the one addition, just the Jasper Skate Park Committee after the paid parking presenters this morning.
So item 6.4 Jasper Skate Park Committee?
Yes, if it works. So we're still communicating.
Any other additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
I would like to add them under new business. Item 10 mask for Jasper the bear. Councillor De Mora.
Maybe 8.5. I would just like to. Put the addition on for cardboard collection, municipal cardboard collection. Just as a follow up with council. I thought it was going to show up today for further discussion.
I'm sorry, Ken.
I thought the garbage collection or sorry, the cardboard collection item was going to show up today. Cause I felt that at the last meeting that we were discussing other options and wasn't on the agenda for today. But I just wanted to follow with council on.
So item 8.5 carpet collection.
8.5, yes.
And you'll be making a presentation?
I'm not making a presentation. I'm just going to seek some advice from council.
Okay, thank you. Any other items to be added to the agenda? There being none, can I have an approval of the agenda? Councillor Callaghan, MP, all in favor? Thank you. That's carried. I'm sorry. Opposed? Well, it's carried. Okay. Okay, this is for an approval to the agenda and. You are opposed. Is there any way we could? Change that around to get you to approve, accept the. It's accepted and it's approved. Majority rules. Thank you. You all have, next item on the agenda, you all have had the opportunity to read the minutes of the August 11 Committee of the Whole Minutes. May I have a motion to approve that? Councillor Butler. Show hands, all in favor. Thank you. Item five, business arising from those minutes. There being none, we'll move right to. Item six presentations. And we have two, three presentations on parking. First item is multi-space parking by John Cowley. And I believe he's available online.
I am.
Well, welcome, John, and go right ahead.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me? Fantastic. And I'm attempting now. To share my screen, host disabled. Oh, I wonder if the host can enable my participant screen sharing, please. I'm assuming, oh, there we go. Fantastic. Everyone can see my screen?
Yes.
And hear me? Perfect. I love it when technology comes together. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present about T2 and also discuss the paid parking. Operations or consideration of the paid parking operations for the town of Jasper. My name is John Cowley. I'm the Senior Regional Sales Manager for T2 for our pay station line for the West Coast. And it's a pleasure to be here. What I thought I would do is first off, talk a little bit about the background, a background about P2. And then also go into considerations for paid parking for the town of Jasper, some key considerations. And then ultimately highlight through our software and our hardware. And components that we're able to bring to the table to support those initiatives. So I'll start off with a little bit about T2. We've been supporting the parking industry for the past 25 years with over 1,600 customers. Ranging from the municipal sector with over 400 clients in that, in that industry alone. And from the city of Nelson that has a small off-street paid parking implementation at this time. And considering an on-street implementation to the city of Houston that has a thousand machines, both on and off-street. So we've got a broad spectrum of capabilities in the municipal sector. We also have clients in the university sector, including University of Alberta and Grant McEwan University to bring it a little bit closer to home. We have the healthcare industry. We support Alberta health services. Both the north and the south zones. And we also support all six provincial health authorities in the state or in the province of British Columbia. And then of course, we do, we support all the national operators from Reef, Formlea, Park to SB Plus to Diamond and what have you, to Indigo. And so we've got a really broad offering in, in the clients and partners that we support. Our Canadian head office is in the Vancouver area, specifically Burnaby. With close to a million dollars in inventory that enables us to provide unparalleled and speedy service to support. For our Western Canadian clients, but also throughout North America. As you know, we do pay stations, we support pay stations, but we also have a permits software. We have enforcement, a mobile enforcement app. We deal, we support gated solutions as well as license plate recognition and resell that. And we've got a data analytics platform. So we've got a wide variety of pillars, if you will, that, that support the, the parking industry. But I also have an open system architecture that enables us to integrate with other partners. Some, one of which is on the line. So really we provide a unified solution. That's a proven platform. That's really unparalleled with experience during the breadth and depth of our, of our operation, of our, of our support. We also have a TT community with over 5,000 members. Annually, we have a user group that's, it's called Connect that supports these five that over 500 people or parking industry. Professionals join for networking and for webinars and what have you. But it really is an opportunity for like-minded professionals to talk about their experiences within the industry and build and grow with each other. So it's not just the T2 resources that you have available through us. It's also an industry of parking knowledge. As I mentioned, T2 is the largest North American-based manufacturer for pay stations. I like this slide because with the 18,000 machines that we have, it shows just the breadth across North America. And that's basically our proven platform being supported through all climate, climate from, from hot, cold, dry, wet. It's an established proven platform. In fact, the, the photo in the bottom right is of a Luke Cosmo. That in Calgary at, at 40 minus 40 degrees this past winter. So to delve right into the, the pay parking considerations for, for the town of Jasper. Moving from a restricted parking area in your downtown core to paid parking within that downtown six block radius. The considerations are both on-street and off-street. So typically in an on-street environment, those, those spaces are closer to businesses. They're more convenient. You want them in a higher turnover so that there's opportunity for other parkers to come and visit those businesses. And then in an off-street environment, and that's typically a bit further away. It's a little less convenient. And there's a higher time limit and it also gives you the ability to, through that larger space, provide parking for larger vehicles such as RVs. But there's an intricate balance there between, and like an ecosystem between the on and off-street for them to function properly. And so that needs to be considered. Moving from or to paid parking will also impact the outside outlining areas around that downtown core. So consideration will have to be taken about a, a restricted, so what you had in the downtown core. Move a restricted parking arrangement to provide, basically it reduces the impact to those neighboring streets. And it directs parkers back into the paid parking zone. With the high flex of visitors that you have. And the town of Jasper is any unique opportunity where you've got a, a residence of 5,000 and you can get upwards of two and a half million. And all those parkers are, well, the majority of them will be first time parkers. So having a, a user-friendly interface is crucial. For that because it'll reduce, well, makes a better parking experience. And it reduces the amount of errors that parkers will have, which will in turn reduce traffic or complaints to city hall or to township. And then discounted parking. So this is another crucial component to you because ultimately. You're in a unique opportunity to be able to drive revenue visitor through visitors paying for paid parking. And take that on us off the residents. So offering a discounted or a free parking to residents is also highly advantageous. Because ultimately those additional visitors are creating the wear and tear to the town. And so allocating those funds or getting those, that revenue from visitors is an optimal situation for you. In fact, the city of White Rock did this exact same thing. Where they started initially with, with restricted parking, put free paid parking during peak times. And then free during off-peak and as, as their paid parking evolved and they moved to paid parking throughout the year. But ultimately it's the visitors that were, that are driving the revenue. That is able to down, to, to fuel downtown improvement projects. As well as pay for the system that you've had to implement because they, they come into the, into the township. And you're also, you also, when you're considering this, I know we're talking about pay stations and mobile payment. But you also need to consider all facets within this parking operation. So although people, you'll, you'll want to have the ability to, to have people pay for parking. You also want to enforce them. Because if there, if there isn't any teeth per se, then you'll start getting a, well, you'll get less revenue. Because people don't really feel it's necessary to pay. They can get away with not paying. So having a solution that also integrates enforcement, obviously the mobile payments, not just the pay stations. And then LPR, depending on how great an area you start developing in paid parking. And you want to ensure that you have an open system architecture. So the one, you've got a proven platform with all these components. But you also have an open system architecture to, for, for additional part integrations to be included as your parking evolves. As far as capital investment, you've obviously got the, the hardware upfront hardware costs. And then you've got the setup costs, the one-time setup costs, so setting up the, the Iris or backend software, setting up that profile, the keys. So one-time things, the installation, the training. Because ultimately what we want to ensure that you have the, the ability to manage your own operations. It's a turnkey operation so that you're trained, you're up and running. We have a PM that's assigned to you and, and gets you operational. So we also understand that that's a capital investment. So we do offer purchase programs, leasing rentals. So we're, we want to ensure that you're, that you're supported. And then operationally, the investment on monthly basis is the monthly backend software for real-time credit card processing and real-time alerts and real-time reporting. Ultimately, it's managing the fleet of pay stations. I should note that our system doesn't have any transactional costs. You love your merchant processing, but. We go with a flat fee so that you know what your, your monthly, your operational costs are. And then the only other two considerations are a wireless data plan. So for connectivity, if you're not running ethernet on the streets, which is typically not the case. And then you'll need to factor into wireless data plan and potentially warranty as well. So I'd like to talk about Iris, our backend system. Ultimately, it's, it's the software that managed the pay station fleet. So it's a software as a service. And anyone that has access to connectivity, has a username, has a password, has access to Iris. And really it's a data analytics platform and you can customize this platform with certain dashboards or 6,000 widgets available. This is a good indication of, of some of the widgets that can be seen in Iris. But ultimately we're, Iris is, is designed to bring the right information to the right people in real time. So, because we all know that we make good decisions with good information. So having a customizable dashboard that relates to all different facets of an operation, whether it be. Operations, finance, maintenance, and you're able to customize that dashboard. So I'll highlight some of the silos within that. So operations management, that's the data visualization that's seeing so as it relates to key performance indicators. Your occupancy, we all have heard about Donald Shoup and having 85% occupancy. So that there's one or two spaces available and turnover on a block face. You're able to track your performance and through this visually. So not just in a, in a reporting scenario. But actually visually be able to see that, which enables you to make good decisions. You can drill down to what, what rates are being purchased at what time. So that also helps determine if you're looking to expand paid parking. You can see what a block face revenue contributes. So that if you're wanting to expand that paid parking, you can develop an ROI to see. Okay, this is, this is a block face adjacent. This is the revenue fund. This is how long, how many months it will cost to. To purchase or pay off any, any hardware costs that you have in developing or expanding your paid parking. Rate management is another very key consideration. I mentioned about having the eco balance between on and off-street. And ensuring that those, those are intricate and that they complement each other. And so we have a very robust rate structure enabling us to tailor that operation. Whether it be hourly incremental event rates, blended rates, pre-purchase rates. As I said, event rates, you want a rate system that is able to accommodate all the different components of your operation. You also want to have flexible pricing. So if, if you want to be able to offer short-term parking or improved turnover. And in a license plate environment, you're able to restrict abuse of people. If you're offering an hour free, you're able to restrict abuse. Of them being able to, to you, to get that free hour every 24-hour period. And then of course discounted parking is the one that's, that's a key component for the town of Jasper is, is identifying residential. Parkers as preferred parkers. So that when they go to the pay station, they enter in their license plate. The, the system checks, okay, what rates are available for this plate? And then only that preferred rate comes back for that license plate. If a visitor that does not register as a preferred plate enters their license plate, only the general public rate comes in. So it's a very easily managed operation. And then we're able to do convenience fees. So we're always looking for opportunities for additional revenue. So if you want to do a flat fee, convenience fee, we can add that on as a, as a general revenue contribution. Collections and maintenance are key within an operation. If you're taking cash, obviously. So through Iris, you get real-time alerts and real-time status of a pay station as well as, as you can see here, mapping. What that means is in the collections environment, you're much more efficient. You establish a threshold. You only collect from pay stations that are at a certain threshold at a dollar value. And it identifies them on a map so that it's easily able to, to, to track. And it's much more efficient than an inefficient route. And it's also good for, for security as well and not leaving excess cash within the machine. And then maintenance, obviously anytime there is a machine that's down, that's not generating revenue. So having a, having alerts with, for paper jams or any, any non-functioning machine or not working properly impacts revenue. And, and so this maximizes your efficiency. And then of course enforcement, we've talked about that earlier. Iris is the, is the software that pulls or has payment information, whether that be. The pay station information or the, the mobile payment information, but it really is the portal for your enforcement software. Your, your license plate recognition software to be able to pull that information from one source. So it's accurate and you're not creating errors and citing people when inappropriate. And I also talked about our integrations and our open system architecture. So we have over 50 integration partners. Ranging from business intelligence to parking reservations, license plate recognition, financial systems. Enforcement systems and pay by phone. And as I said, our, one of our partners is here today, pay by phone. And, but this really gives us the ability to bring that information within Iris. So that there's one source for your enforcement data. And it eliminates the errors that, that can arise from that. Because ultimately you want to be able to, through these integrations and build a system that is specific to the town of Jasper. So that it's customized to your particular needs and can evolve as your paid parking needs and develop. How we doing for time? Well, the hardware component. So this is a key component with our operator, of our offering, obviously the Luke Cosmo. It's a sleek design. It's designed specifically for an on-street and off-street because of its sleek design. It's less intrusive within the parking industry. But more importantly, as you can see, it's a, it's not cluttered and it's a top-down operation. So you look at the visual display, you've got the, the interaction with the keypad. And then you got the payment as it flows down and then ultimately taking the receipt. It's ADA compliant, it's PCI compliant, PADSS. That's also very important because you want to ensure that the, that the credit card information that you do handle is addressing the highest standards of the industry. And we do that. We do our service level one and we recertify every year. We also acknowledge that this is an investment in a hardware end. So that machine, this machine does pay, pay and display, pay by space and pay by license. And obviously over the, being with the company for 10 years, over the past five years, it's been paid by license. And that's much more efficient to operation and it's much more convenient for the end, end user to be able to add time. It's much more efficient to be able to enforce because it's license plate as a credential. And so, but you've got the opportunity of all of these. Also multiple payment options. So coins, credit card, smart card, we offer contactless for PayPass, PayWave, Google Pay. Apple or Apple Pay, Google Wallet. So all payment options. So it's a convenient experience for the parker. And I also should highlight that it's multilingual support. So being a destination such as the town of Jasper. You want multilingual support. So we can offer English, French, Spanish, Chinese are some of the languages that are available on the, on the screen. But ultimately with it being such a user-friendly interface, it's a lot easier to, to, to follow along. And a much more convenient experience with the, with the parking. Last thing I'll mention, actually second to last thing I'll mention is the machine is zinc coated Cold World Steel. With a five-year anti-corrosion warranty and, and obviously functions as noted earlier. Up to minus 40 in the, in the Alberta environment. And all, last thing I wanted to highlight is we've a, a unique component to our offerings called Extend by Phone. Where you're able to conveniently add time at the pay station. So you go to the pay station, you enter your license plate, pay for your parking. Then it says, do you want to be alerted when your parking is about to expire and we'll text you. So this is an added convenience to the parker and they don't have to set up an account. They're able to conveniently add time and it's also a benefit to the, to the town of Jasper because it's an additional revenue stream. With, with people paying for parking. So thank you very much for your time. I'll pass this on back, pass the conch back to the moderator.
Thank you, John Cowley. Questions for Mr. Cowley? Councillor Wilson?
So you were touching on it a little bit. I was interested in the pay by phone idea. And I think now in this time with COVID etcetera, that we don't really want to be sharing the same. Device that often. So is it pretty accessible to jump on the app? You know, say pull into a parking stall, jump on the app and pay without approaching the, the unit itself? Is that capability there?
So mobile, yeah. So let's, so the pay station, any transaction that started in the pay station stays, remains with the pay station. And any transaction started with the mobile app stays with the mobile, with a mobile app. The, there is no, they're actually separate platforms. To speak to your um, concern about the, the connectivity or, or the, the touch point of the machine. And we offer the, the, the tap or the contactless, and obviously is a consideration. And ultimately, I think that, uh, as we all do get back to some normacy, and we will. And I think, I think that the, the need to touch surfaces is, will always be there. And really, it's just reiterates the need to always, for hygiene, being able to touch. Uh, when you touch, you always wash your hands and, and you remove money out of the equation. And then, and that addresses that concern, ultimately, I think that's, that'll address the concern about, about the transmission of, of the the pandemic or the, the COVID virus.
Thank you for that. Further questions? Well, thank you, John.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, sorry, Counselor Butler.
Sorry, thank you. Thanks for the presentation, I appreciate the information. I just have one question, really, um, I noticed that you have paid attention to our particular situation locally, you're aware of the, I think you referenced our three-by-two block downtown core where we could conceivably look at implementing paid parking. And you also noted, um, the obvious need to address uh, potentially resident discounted or free parking and then surrounding residential districts, so we don't simply drive parking into those areas, so. Given that first look familiarity, do you think, um, have, have you looked into it enough to know whether the community, whether we could make money doing this? Um, my view would be if uh, all we do is um, break even. If the hardware costs, software costs, enforcement costs, um, and payroll costs associated um, simply equal our income, then we haven't really gained much, and I'm wondering about your thoughts on a very small community like ours and uh, those income, net income potentials.
Right, now, that's a, that's a very good question, and obviously, it's top of mind for, for council, because you want to ensure that you're able to fund what you're looking to do, and ultimately, it's not just funding the equipment, but it's also funding improvements downtown. So we have a, we have an ROI calculator and, and we have certain assumptions, so when I took into consideration the three hundred and seventy-four um, on-street, and I think it was three hundred and seventy-five off-street or vice versa. And then the number of, of machines required, typically, a machine will cover up to fifty spaces in an off-street environment. And it'll cover typically ten spaces, potentially twelve, um, in an on-street environment. So you, when you factor in the number of pay stations required, and, and if I, if I enter uh, certain assumptions as in the turnover, so a higher turnover in the off-street environment, or sorry, in the on-street environment. So with three transactions in a, per space in a day, uh, and I think it was one and a half transact, transactions in the off-street environment, at a one dollar an hour rate. Your ROI for the equipment was nine months. So your capital investment would have been paid off, or would be paid off, given those assumptions, uh, in less than a year. So I absolutely think this is a viable uh, consideration for the town of Jasper.
Thank you for that. Thank you, any more questions? Thank you very much, uh, John, for your presentation. We'll move on to the next presenter.
Thank you.
Joni Eros, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name, I believe you're available next on the on the online connection, thank you.
Good morning, can everyone hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I'm also like John, gonna attempt to share my screen here for you. And we'll see what we can get done. All right, so is everybody looking at my presentation? I hope, I hope everyone can hear me.
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Okay, well, good morning. First, I want to thank you for having me, uh, my name is Joni Eros, so you were super close, it happens all the time. Um, with pay by phone, mobile payments. Uh, I just wanted to quickly mention that I am also from a small town, sort of not unlike Jasper. Uh, just outside Vancouver, British Columbia, and I have spent a lot of time working with our local council on projects that are going to enhance our city, so today's presentation, I've tried to really take into consideration a lot of the different facets that you have to consider. Uh, the residents being one, the visitors being another big part of number two, and then, of course, you know, the economy, the growing economy for the town itself. So just by way of agenda, today I want to tell you a little bit about Pay by Phone and where we come from. I want to talk about the, the challenges facing uh, the community of Jasper itself, and that's based on some of the the meeting minutes I've watched uh, for your past council meetings, some of the documentation I found, some of the ongoing market research you've done. I've tried to incorporate some of those challenges and come up with some solutions for you. Then we're going to take a look at the app experience itself, this is from the parker's perspective, to show you how frictionless mobile payments can be. Uh, a little bit on data collection, this is how you're going to really streamline your program and understand what's going on in the town with regard to paid parking. Uh, we'll take a look at adoption and implementation. Uh, it's all fine and dandy to bring in a paid parking program, but how do we get the, the public to adopt it, whether it be resident or visitor? And the implementation, what does that look like? How do we get this going in your town? And finally, we'll round that out with solutions for your community in reference to some of the challenges that we addressed at the beginning. So first about Pay by Phone, well, Pay by Phone, uh, was founded in Vancouver and has been headquartered there for over twenty years. Um, roughly two years ago, we were acquired by Volkswagen Financial. And the reason I point that out is because Volkswagen came in, loved our product, and really wanted to grow with it and see it succeed in sort of a, a fast-paced tech world, so I mentioned it as a really solid base and, um, a really great opportunity for innovation as the relationship with Jasper grows, uh, you know, ebbs and flows. By the numbers, uh, we take in roughly five hundred and fifty million dollars of parking revenue a year. That's not dollars in our pockets, that's dollars uh, and for municipalities, just like yours. We have thirty-five-plus million registered users, these are people who have downloaded our app and are using it regularly across the world. We're in over a thousand locations worldwide across fourteen different countries. But the two that I think are the most important are the twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five-day-year call center. These are, this is live support offered to your parkers in um, multiple languages. So this really, when you're implementing paid parking in your town, this really takes a lot of the heavy lifting off of the municipal employees themselves, so we're handling those calls, we're educating your parkers. And finally, and my favorite one, is our four-point-nine-star rating in the App Store. It's very easy to make, uh, to write a review or make a comment in the App Store when you're having a bad experience, when you're angry about something. This is over two hundred and seventy thousand people who have taken the time to write a positive review on a parking experience. So it's just a testament to how seamless our, our parking transactions can be and how user-friendly the app really is. So things I noticed, um, some of the community challenges I think that are facing Jasper are first and foremost, the seasonal wear and tear, so it sounds like you have visitors coming in, they're using up the amenities, they're tearing up the roads. And then they leave again, and who's left with that bill but the tax-paying residents? So how can we alleviate some of that for them year-round? The high capital cost on hardware, we really want to be asset-right when we're bringing in a hardware solution. Um, and Pay by Phone has many partners in the hardware industry, as John pointed out. Um, you really want to make sure that you're spending that capital cost appropriately. The inability to implement time restrictions, so now we're talking about businesses in the downtown core. We want to start to take a look at abuse of parking spaces, especially in that on-street area, we want to move the traffic around. Exploiting resident parking, you do not want to put in a program that's going to push people into those resident spaces because they just want to avoid the paid parking, so we're going to take a look at how we can get around that. And deterring an already low tourist turnout, so sadly, COVID has hit everyone hard and for different reasons. You don't want people coming to Jasper and finding out that, you know, there's a new paid parking program in place, and that leaves a bad taste in their mouth, so we're going to provide a very frictionless, very easy-to-use experience, and I'll talk more about that. So the buzzword of twenty-twenty is contactless payments, I know someone did mention it in the last presentation. Uh, so I just wanted to go over, obviously, Pay by Phone is a contactless solution, but it doesn't mean that we don't layer in and complement all sorts of parking operations. So underneath um, the, the phone slide on to the left there, the black and white slide, that's what we're trying to avoid, that's what contactless means. We don't want people searching for coins and plugging, touching coins, plugging them into a meter, and then subsequently having somebody having to come and take those coins out of that meter again, that is exactly not what contactless payments is. But when you look into the um, right-hand side here, we have a multi, uh, multi-space meter, that's a, a loop two from T2. We have partnered with them, and we're providing options to the parker. So now, you know, if we're in a multi-space environment where that, that meter's now facilitating, you know, parking lot with fifty spaces. Those parkers also have the option to pull out their phone and pay by mobile payment, and that integrates with that system. Um, same as below, uh, you know, that's a single space meter that's, you know, generally facilitates one, maybe two spaces on-street. Now you do have the option to pay with your credit card, but we've also layered in that mobile payment option, and you can see with our sticker below the location code, it's another way to pay for parking using your phone, maybe while you're still in your car. And finally, in the top right corner, here's your virtual pay station, this is what it looks like when you're going pay by phone only, when this is the only offering. So you get these beautiful signs provided to you by Pay by Phone, and there's our location code yet again. That's how they know that, how they can pay for parking, full instructions included on the sign. And you can basically place these wherever you need the visibility, the visibility of paid parking. Guest login, we were an industry first in providing a guest login, this is a perk for your parker. So we've, we've now introduced a new program in the downtown core, and everybody's not sure that they want to, you know, download the app, they want to try it out first. This is an excellent means for them to try the program, initiate a very, you know, seamless, frictionless parking session. And I'll be honest, eight times out of ten, these, you know, guest logins become registered users, which is a perk for the town. We want to collect that data, we want them to have a good experience and want to use the app time and time again. As far as languages, we have lots of visitors coming into Jasper in your peak season. Uh, Pay by Phone will launch in currently twelve different languages. And what this means is, as they walk themselves through the app, they're, they're getting that in their preferred language, so they know the rules of parking in your town. Um, also, if you'll notice, you know, to the, to the right of the slide, there's universal icons each step of the way through the parking session. Things that we all recognize, so there's the location dot, where are you? There's the car, your plate number, the time, you know, how much time do you want to park, and then, of course, your price tag, so your payment. So visually speaking, we can really communicate to whomever is visiting that time. The app experience from the parker's side, so the first thing when you launch your app, we, you can see we have a lovely um, picture here, I think it's a beautiful picture of Jasper. That's called a dynamic label, and it really assists when you are launching the app in your town. Just confirming to the parker that, yeah, they've, they've downloaded the right app, they're in the right location, so there's a beautiful picture of Jasper too, to highlight that. The first thing they're going to be asked for is that uh, location number, so if we think back to the virtual pay station, the sign that code, that number, that's the first thing they're going to enter. They're then going to be prompted to select a vehicle and enter a plate, so all Pay by Phone mobile payments are pay by license plate, that's how we're recording the car. You can list as many plates as you want, you can even take a picture of the car, so you don't confuse your plates like I often do. I will sometimes drive my husband's car, and then I can't remember which one of our plate numbers it is, so I take a picture and I put it there so I can remember for future. You're then going to be asked for your length of stay, so this is all going to be within the parameters that you are going to build yourself in your, in your back office portal. And you can do that by hour, so they can say, I want to be there for two hours, or they can park until. So I don't know how many hours, but I want to park until six o'clock and make it easy that way. You're going to plug that time, and the next prompt is going to be to confirm your parking session. So three simple steps, and we're all ready to park, so where are you? Your plate number, and how long you want to stay. The cost of that session is going to pop up, and then you're going to pay with any of the credit cards that the town of Jasper chooses to offer. Or Apple Pay or Google Pay. So finally, your home screen then switches over and you are in the countdown for your parking session. So it's going to click down how much time you have left. So depending on what the parameters are in that parking area, you might be given the option to extend. So you're sitting in the salon, you might decide, well, I'm done my hair, but I might get a set of nails. You can extend that transaction just from exactly where you're sitting. No more running back out to the meter, digging under the car seat to find one more order to get fifteen minutes. Here's how we're going to benefit our residents, so of course, visitors, we just want them to have an experience they recognize, we want it to be very easy and seamless. And I think we've achieved that, but what we're going to do for our residents is a new product called Rates and Rates. So this is where we can register a group of license plates that are going to get special rates. They might, you might do this in the residential areas, so that, you know, they're getting parking for free, but everybody else has to pay. You might offer them a free or discounted session downtown, we can really kind of customize those parameters around these registered plates with this program. We offer this for municipal staff that might need to work in spaces that are generally paid parking, we offer this for our healthcare workers during COVID. This is an excellent program to um, offer dynamic pricing to a group within your town. So to recap the user benefits, I'm getting alerts from wherever I am, I can extend from wherever I am. There's no more digging for coins, there's no more collecting coins. And finally, personal security, so sometimes standing in line with your credit card in hand, waiting to pay at a meter can be an intimidating task, just depending on the lighting, depending on the time of day. Now we can pay for parking in our car without pulling any payment out whatsoever, just our phone. Operator benefits, so finally, how can we help the town of Jasper itself implementing this program? There are new upfront investments required, excuse me, with Pay by Phone, we are a transaction-based company. So we are going to take a fee per use for transaction, and we're going to invoice those transactions to you once a month. So there, the cost is sort of recurring, but based on volume. Dynamic pricing, now you can decide that maybe on-street costs more than off-street, maybe the new S lot has some transient transient parking, and we want to offer that as an economy lot, push people to the outsides of town. Of course, our residents, we can offer them a different price, we can offer those streets a different price. And data collection, so no more costly research studies. You are your own research study, and I'm going to show you how that, how that works. But we're going to take a look year over year, are we priced correctly? Do we have busier spots than others? We're going to be able to collect our own data and really hone our own program for the town of Jasper. I added this too, I think it's interesting that John mentioned, uh, Dr. Shoup, Dr. Donald Shoup is a um, a professor at UCLA. But he has written this book, and I thought I'd include it for you, just, just in case you're interested, but it's the high cost of free parking, and he really does make a lot of strong points and a lot of positive points around going from free to paid parking. And I thought maybe the town of Jasper would be interested in hearing some of his ideas, but I've listed a few here, he's just, he's he's very innovative in how he reaches out to the community, some of his, some of his ideas were um, you know, calling out the amenities that, that paid parking have funded, so maybe there's a park in town, and it's like last last season's parking revenue all went to this beautiful park for the children. Sometimes um, he's taken initiatives where there's maybe four different projects within the city, and if you get a parking ticket, you get to choose which project your parking ticket fees go to, so it's a very interesting read, I thought I'd include that, uh, just in your quest for going free to paid parking. So this is what it looks like for you, again, you get this uh, platform, this um, back office portal. And it is cloud-based, you can have as many logins as you want, and you can access it from any device you wish to. But this is your dashboard, this is where you're going to see your revenue trends. your transaction trends by location. This is where you're going to do all of your reporting out of, excuse me, consumer activities, you know, seasonal activities. Do we need to charge more during the peak season? Do we need to turn it off completely in the off-season? Here's where you're really getting your market research done in that in real time. Dynamic pricing, you have complete rate autonomy. So you can change your rates at the drop of the hat and you can also have dynamic rates again by location. So those location codes, each one will be tied to a set of rules and rates that you decide for yourself. Event parking, maybe it needs to change for one day. There's a big event in town and it's totally free parking or it's, you know, $10 a day. You can do all of that. And before you go live, you also have the ability to test it out. So you're never going live with rates that you're not really sure are going to convey to the part, the the public. You are testing them for yourself within your software before you go live with them. So we have a program now for visitors, for residents and for the town of Jasper's economy moving forward. I love this analogy. If you build it, they will come. And not without help. So we are, we don't just set you up and walk away. We are with you to make sure that this program is adopted by the public, no matter whom is using it. And we have a lot of great ideas on how we can get that done. So we have an award-winning marketing team. And why I mentioned that they're award-winning is because their awards are not for beautiful billboards, you know, on the side of the highway. We have an incredibly innovative team that really customizes getting the word out in your area to what you need. So these are just a few of the marketing examples. Sometimes we've engaged with social media influencers, you know. I I don't know many off the top of my head, but my daughter and son could probably tell you a million of them with thousands and thousands of, you know, followers and all they do is they talk about this great parking session that they had in Jasper. And all next thing you know, everybody knows about pay by phone. We have taken out articles in parking magazines and other magazines. This highlights your beautiful town, but also gets the word out that now you can pay to park with pay by phone. We've run contests. This particular one was for for Warm Up Winnipeg. But a story I really think is is interesting is most recently during COVID, the city of Regina, who has been an existing client of ours for a while, actually reached out to us when they were about to restart their paid parking program. So during COVID, everything had shut down. They stopped charging on the street. What happened was the people that still had to work down there were take, were kind of abusing those spaces in front of the businesses. And the business district was really stuck because there were people that could run the risk of possibly, you know, going out of business because there's no parking in front of their store. It was not convenient. So they reached out to us and I think about a week later, our marketing team not only had devised this really cool social media campaign that, you know, got the word out that paid parking was back in Regina, but also engaged the local vendors. So if you were parked in a spot on street and you went into local business and you showed that they were, you know, you were paid with pay by phone, you got 10% off in that store. So you're really generating that that relationship in the community. And then finally, at the end of the summer, when the campaign was about to end, they had a contest. So who had done it the most times? So I thought that was really cool and it's just a testament to, again, the ongoing relationship. Let's make sure people know we're out there. Let's make sure that we're engaging with the community. So how do we get this done? Implementation steps are quite straightforward with this mobile payment program. From the time that you, you know, enter into an agreement with us, a contract, we get your banking set up for a card not present transaction. We integrate with any enforcement or any hardware partners like Ventec and T2, who are on the call today. Both partners of pay by phone. We get your signage, your virtual pay stations all set up and sent out to you. And finally, right before we go live, we train your staff. So you will be tied to a client success manager at pay by phone, who will go through that training with you and be there to support you through your journey. And we can get all of that done in roughly six to eight weeks. So to round out today's presentation, I just want to make sure I addressed all of the things that I saw as challenges. The seasonal autonomy. So we we are, we are charging the visitors now. They are paying for something before they go. So we can really directly drive that revenue if we want to, to that wear and tear on the roads, to those used up amenities. We have rate autonomy. So we're changing rates. We're balancing this program for residents, tourists, new lots, new projects all over the town of Jasper. A globally recognized brand. So visitors, anyone coming in will likely recognize the pay by phone logo and know that means paid parking and know how to do it. Relief for registered residents. So we're not pushing out into the street. We have a program designed for registering their plates and giving them a break on that parking while charging the visitors. And data driven, driven. No more costly studies. We are our own study. We're, we are constantly in charge of the metrics that are coming through in our paid parking program. So with that, I think I am at time. I'd love to open it up to questions from anybody who has any. And thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. E. Ross, for your presentation. The Jasper pictures included in your presentations are noted and appreciated. Questions from counselors, please. Counselor Wilson.
Thanks for your presentation. It was very engaging. I'd like the idea of the little to or the low to no hardware option. And we're a pretty small community. So the less hardware units, I think, on on our streets, the better. I think you did mention there is a pay by phone only option and that seems ideal with no hardware on the street at all, although I guess you would then get the question, you know, how do you combat the question, I don't, I don't have a smartphone, so I can't pay for parking? Is there an opportunity to call in, you know, a pretty prehistoric? But is it a possibility on the signs that has a toll-free number that you could call in with a basic flip phone or a or a phone somewhere else? But I just, you know, you go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, no, my, that's a great question. And I I I I found myself rushing a little, so typically I do answer that. There are four ways to pay by phone. So obviously, opening up a smartphone in the app is the number one way. We also have a product called interactive voice recognition or IVR. And that is exactly what you're describing. It's a hotline that is listed as well on the sign. And you can call in and actually initiate a parking transaction that way. You can actually go on to the internet and and open the website and and engage in a parking session that way as well as the back office. So you can call support and they can walk you through one as well. So there are four different ways of having a pay by phone parking session initiated.
Great. That sounds ideal. Thank you.
Thank you for that. More questions? Counselor Butler?
Thanks for the presentation. Tell me, what are the, some of the smallest communities in which you are currently operating around the world and how do they compare in size to Jasper?
Oh, gosh. Well, I mean, I think it's a sort of, it's, it's very hard to hone that out. Like what comes to mind right now is we, we just launched at a university in Langley, which would be a very small town, right? So it it kind of, because we launch in different, in different spaces, it's sort of contingent on where we are. Oftentimes, we will partner with a hardware, you know, offering that is going to facilitate smaller lots off-street in municipalities. So as far as numbers are concerned, do you mean like parking spaces, like that amount or population?
Well, I was thinking population, but I take your point. In the case of Langley, you're suggesting that you launched in just one district, basically, in a, in a university, which is probably correlatively sized to the town of Jasper.
Yeah, and I would say that honestly, it then, then it just comes down to sort of traffic, right? So how many people? So it it is sort of comparable to Jasper in the sense that, you know, you have all these visitors landing and then sort of year round, you have sort of a more leveled out, I guess, population. So, um, yeah, I I would use Langley as an example. We have lots of small municipalities just across the border in Washington State. And what it comes down to truly is visibility. So we have the city of Vancouver, which is a large population. We also have the city of Seattle, which is a large population. So what happens is you get that trickle-down effect and now you have smaller communities like, you know, Olympia, Kirkland, all these smaller communities that sort of feed the big cities. They want it too because their residents see it somewhere larger.
Thanks very much.
Thanks a lot. More questions? Counselor Wilson?
Just off the top of your head, are you located in centers such as Edmonton, Spruce Grove? Or, you know, Sherwood Park or Calgary, like Alberta? Towns, cities?
Yeah, so we, we do work with a few partner operators, Diamond Parking, that operates lots in Calgary and Edmonton. We are launching currently with another operator in Edmonton, a rather large operator in Edmonton called Procura. And they have sort of, I think they have one centralized large lot. And then they have several smaller lots peppered through Edmonton itself.
Sorry, just one more question. Do you think you could, do you feel comfortable launching just as pay by phone, not partnering with a hardware company such as T2? Just, you know, may, maybe just for a trial run to get us started before we make our big investment into any actual hardware, hardware stations or pay stations, et cetera?
I always feel comfortable with that. However, I will say, just by way of being a little bit more consultative, I think what the, what the town really needs to take a look at is is being very consistent in their program. So I, I feel strongly that if you're going to offer the town any hardware, you really just need to implement the program. So everybody's on the same page. I know just even in Maple Ridge where I live, it's, it's a smaller community. They have really struggled with piecemealing solutions over the years. And every time they make a change, I feel like the the community, the residents, they backlash only on this, only, only on the mentality that something's changing. So if you go in with a paid parking program, I think it's really important to round it out and understand what you need and sort of launch it all at once. That that would be my, my suggestion.
Thank you. Counselor Demora?
Good day, Ms. Eros. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's impressive. I just, when I was looking at on your website, I noticed that you are in Whistler as well. And I was wondering how long you've been there and are you working with the municipality there? Is it a municipally based system?
Yeah, it is. So we've been there a long, I want to say five plus years. I'd, I'd have to really check my data on that, but a long time and Whistler is, is very successful in its parking, in its paid parking programs. And I think they would be a really interesting case study for you because they are, it is all run municipally and they actually branch out and they have task force, forces for different things. So for instance, sign placement, which is huge for pay by phone, you, you really need those signs. Signs sort of fell under this sort of community umbrella, under the, the, you know, under the council's branch out sort of group, if you will. And there was a time when they didn't really understand the importance of the signs. They thought that pay by phone was just throwing signs up everywhere. And it wasn't until we were able to go back and prove the revenue that could be generated just by putting their signs up more appropriately, that we really got the, the sort of city back on task with that backend program. And, you know, dollars and cents talk, right? So then, again, it goes back to being that community partner with our clients and really helping them generate that revenue. So, yes, municipally, municipally speaking, it's all run that way through the city. However, it's making sure that if you have these task force or you have these, you know, groups that are tasked with signs and it might not have anything to do with parking, making those groups talk. So that's how they get their program to work.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any more questions from Ms. E. Ross? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
We will now move to our third presenter on paid parking. It is Gary Cat from Ventec Product. As soon as we get him online in our system, you can go ahead.
Okay, so can everyone hear me now?
Yes, maybe, maybe speak a little louder, but.
All right. So let's, let me share my screen if I can. Okay. Now. Okay, can you see my screen now? Oh, hang on. I gotta hit the share button. How about now? Do people see my?
Not as yet, no.
Oh, okay. All right, I gotta do something here. Okay, zoom. Okay, later, fine. How about now?
Nope.
Okay, let's see here. So much for the Mac today. Oh, I see. I'm sorry. I have to hit that one too, I think. Now?
Not yet.
Not yet. All right, well.
We have a suggestion from Counselor Butler.
Do we?
Oh, I was just suggesting we could point out that we all have your slides on our device. So if you're having trouble screen sharing, if you simply reference what slide you're looking at, we'll be able to see it.
Okay, well then, let's, let's get going now. What I don't want to do is rehash a number of the points already made by the, by the presenters. And I do want to give you a little background. Ventec, me personally, actually, I'm a, we work a lot with parks agencies, federal agencies, Canadian Park Service, National Park Service in the US, the US Forest Service. So our, our claim to fame, although we do develop and manufacture technology specifically for parking payments, which would be that segment of Ventec that would, might be of interest by the town of Jasper. We're really known for our partnership with agencies. I'll, I'll give you a specific example and and one that I think, one of the counselors raised the point. We're a partner with the town of Sedona, Arizona. I'm not sure if you're familiar with this little place in the Red Rock District of the National Forest there. And in that particular setting, we have a Ventec, we call it an automated fee collection system. It's for parks fees, but it really is parking for the various trailheads, for the town, et cetera. Maybe not the town streets in this case, but certainly in and around all the parks. And we are offered there of partnership as opposed to sale of equipment. We, we operate that in conjunction with the federal US Forest Service. And so their capital expenditure to, to quote, buy the Ventec system is, is not, is zero dollars, which means that we're, we're there to collect fees on their behalf. We collect 100% of the fees and deliver them electronic deposits each month. And then we do charge a fee, of course. It's not a free service, but the, the point really here is that our, our difference that you could say between us and say a T2 and and others like us, pay by phone. Like pay by phone, we have no capex particularly. But we do offer our technology in, in the form of what we call a revenue share. It can take a fixed management fee. We find that it's much more agreeable when we take a percentage of the revenue. And in particular, in Jasper, I, I do understand, having been there with my kids, two summers ago, it was pretty busy and now it's not so much. So you're, you're certainly your revenues would be down and your ability to pay down a capital expenditure would be certainly in reduced at this point in time. And in the Ventec model of revenue share, we would share in that. It's, it's a little pain. But it's, it's, it's the way of the world right now with this, the COVID situation. So our, our real difference, although we're a technology provider, we provide all the things that have been mentioned by T2 and and pay by phone. And in fact, pay by phone is a partner of ours. We, we have a number of systems where the Ventec machinery works in. We have a number of systems where the Ventec machinery works in conjunction with it. So if you like Pay by Phone, you certainly can like a Ventec solution because that's, they're part of our offering in other jurisdictions. So moving on, I'll just now touch on the agenda. I don't want to rehash the introduction of Ventec is indeed that we've been around for, since 1954. You're talking to a Canadian-trained professional engineer. I do lead the business unit. I'm the business development lead for Ventec. We have two R&amp;D centers. One of them is in Vancouver, British Columbia, where a lot of the technology is developed. We have another in Sydney, Australia. And our corporate base is actually Petaluma, California, which would be Sonoma County. Long history, of course, since 1954. It's a BC-owned enterprise. As I said, I'm a professional, Canadian professional engineer. And we're on the topic of Ventec history, and I don't want to drag this out too far, but we've had many generations, at least 10 different generations of machinery. Nowadays, as you've pointed out, the propensity and the push towards a mobile-based payment, we've, let's say, met that challenge over the last six years. We have a mobile website that we attach to our fee collection, fixed fee collection systems. And you can pay through your phone, you can pay through the machinery, you can go on a website, and specifically for the residents of the city, or the town, sorry, they can go onto a website and apply for a resident parking pass. And if you choose to provide it at no cost, that's certainly part of the way the system works. They register their license plate or their license plates. And when it comes time to check on vehicles that are parked in the town, if they do have a residence permit, they are exempt effectively. And of course, these are all things that you can, we would set up in conjunction with you. Moving on to our client map, like T2, we have quite a distribution of clients across North America. The next biggest one, we've been in Edmonton for many years, providing parking services there. We are just about to start up in conjunction with a partner of ours for the Edmonton Transit Service, a very large transit ticketing system. Now, of course, you're not taking transit fees in Jasper, but certainly a segment of Ventec does. And our experience in the cold and in the heat sometimes in the summer of Edmonton, we've run our equipment through many, many tests. And we'll be collecting probably through our equipment a roughly $35 million annually for the Edmonton Transit Service. So these are, Ventec equipment is known for its robustness. We wouldn't be around for 60 some odd years if we hadn't been able to achieve that. Moving on to our clients, you can see there's quite a list of clients. A lot of them are municipalities. As I said, we work with state governments. We're in at least a dozen different states, collecting fees generally for the state park system. Again, parking fees, but in typically more remote locations. For us, on-street parking in a very small urban center like yours would be, well, not to say a trivial matter, but certainly something that we've taken care of for many, many other clients. Moving on, you know, it's a bit of a misnomer to talk about our product overview. What Ventec offers is partnership. And I'm sure you all know that the toughest ship to sail is a partnership. And it sometimes gets rocky, but we're there for the long haul. When we get into situations where we form a partnership with a town or a state park service or a federal park service, we're there for the duration. And so all these products that we offer, and there's a variety of them. Some of them are camera-based tolling systems, some of them are pay station machinery on-street, certainly compliance checking systems that are required for paid parking systems. This is another part of the Ventec, what I call it, the product wheel. And for the record, we realize, or I certainly do, having been, let's say, a subscriber to Jasper National Park for many, many years, I'm actually a mountain climber more than I am a business guy. But at the heart of it is compliance checking. Once you've collected the fee, whether it's through the mobile system, it could be Pay by Phone, it could be Ventec, it could be through a fixed pay station on the street, if you wish to go that way. Once those fees have been collected and/or a resident has purchased their permit, it comes time to check whether or not a particular vehicle is, has paid status. And that's done through different Ventec systems we use. We can use camera-based, vehicle-mounted equipment to quickly check compliance throughout the entire town. We also have handhelds where you could have, or we could provide, a compliance checking officer that looks, walks the beat, and checks the vehicle plates for paid status. That's another part of our program. Moving on to the paid parking slide. Of course, the entire reason for doing this, and I think it's an absolutely legitimate one, is to have the many, many visitors, and I really, of course, do hope that they all return, the many visitors that you've had and will continue to have, to help share in the costs of the town infrastructure. And the visitor parking revenue would actually help you to do that. And I believe that you have every right to collect it. And of course, my job, were we to partner with you, would be to ensure that it's collected in an equitable way and a consistent way in that it provides equal opportunity for, let's say, the merchants in your little central business district to pay for one of their parkers' parking or discount it if they like. We have merchant programs where they can use an interface into the Ventec system to discount their parkers' fee if they choose to. And then, of course, nothing's really for free. And they'll need to pay the town for having, let's say, given away the parking for their patrons. So these programs are all part of the Ventec montage of product offerings. And certainly, what we would do before any technology is deployed in your town is to look at all the various facets of it. Moving on to the paid parking system features. Of course, on-street payments for visitors. This was really the reason why David Osborne originally asked me to come and visit the town, which I did do, and had a look at your central business district. I walked the streets there. I had a look at walking the whole perimeter of the downtown, making sure that I had a good feel for what might be required. And then, working with Natasha, of course, we developed this little presentation for you. And one of the things that struck me, of course, is that, yes, an entire set, all of what Ventec has to offer, on-street payments, mobile payment applications, resident parking programs, monthly and long-term parkers, merchant validations, and license plate compliance checking, these are all facets that would be required in some measure in your parking program, were you to decide to proceed with that. And one of the bigger things is the word enforcement is used often as it relates to payments. We like to use the word compliance because compliance really, your compliance is really set by what you do when you discover a vehicle that hasn't paid the appropriate fee. You can cite them. I mean, we have many, many cities that will just plain old cite them. But you also have the option of issuing a warning and asking them gently to pay the fee that's been asked of them. And our systems are tunable. One of the things that we really pride ourselves on is each and every system that we deploy, it, let's say, embraces the aspects that are required to, to the extent that it's possible to make the setting fair and achieve the goals that you're after, which is really, I think, if I understand it right, help unburden the residents of Jasper with the heavy burden of paying for all the infrastructure when you have a high, high volume of visitors visiting your town annually. Okay, moving on, why Ventec? I think I've mentioned this. We have many, many technological solutions. I think these are all achievable through companies like T2 as well. But in the end, we represent a different approach. And that's the partnership approach where we will share in. If there's pain to be had because revenues are down, we would be sharing in that with you. If that's, and working on solutions to try to increase those revenues if it's at all possible. And I recognize that in the time with this virus, this is a difficult end to achieve. But we would be in with you the entire distance and working on solutions, technological and otherwise. I'm on the parking payment machine slide. This is a machine that's based on today's Android technology. So imagine an Android inside a metal container. And so all of what you would expect in an Android smartphone, including payments, and contactless is the key, is available here. Very highly flexible user workflows, multi-language, of course. And the other aspect of it eventually would be to use the Android inside the machine to ensure as contactless an experience as possible. And there's various techniques that we could talk about that would allow us to achieve that for you. We do have this other body of technology. We call it the online permit manager. This would be the aspect of the system that residents might appeal to. Or parkers that are heading for your town that wish to buy longer-term parking, they can buy it all ahead of time using today's online technologies. Of course, it doesn't take a pay station to do this, but the data and the permits that are purchased are all integrated into one compliance dataset, as we call it. Quickly built inside the machine is what we call the all-in-one payment terminal. This is the, the core of this is really contactless payments, including things like Interact Flash in Canada, where we'll be rolling that out in Edmonton. This fall, as it turns out. So we're turning on by the end of the year the first 30 of roughly 130 transit ticketing machines. But they have a common core to them, today's online contactless payments, including Interact Flash. Moving on, we do, we have these wraps, cabinet wraps, so we can make the look of the pay station in your town match your concept of what it ought to look like, were you to go with on-street equipment. And of course, no system is complete without support. Pay by Phone has their online AVR-type support and call-in support. We have, when it comes to fixed machinery, we have local support. We'll have that out of Edmonton. If it becomes necessary and interesting, we could have local support for you in your town. And that may be some staff that you have available already to deal with. Things like machinery, if you don't have it, we'll provide it. And like T2, we do have a whole suite of reporting. I'm on to the PPS operations and reporting slide. We have a very rich reporting system that allows you to look at your revenues over time, look at your utilization, etc., make adjustments possibly with the fee structure, etc. And effectively just tune your operation based on the data that's coming in from the endpoints, which would be the mobile ticketing and the on-street equipment, were you to go with that. So in summary, we have a parking system designed specifically for Jasper. I mean, it would be not too useful unless we completely tuned it for all the aspects that concern you. Resident parking fee exempt, of course, if that's what you desire. And the other program, the merchant program, where the merchants get to pay for their parkers, so they're not upset about the introduction of a parking fee. And of course, in general, and we've proven this elsewhere, that the system that we provide is an extensible one, it's reliable. And with the Android inside the machine and the Android-based apps, etc., the use of the technology is easy to use, it's easy to pay. No one likes to pay, but if the easier that you make it, the more agreeable that they'll find it. And I guess the, I kind of stressed this, Ventec's always willing to help. I mean, when we get involved with a particular fee collection setting, this one would be, would be one of the smaller ones, but that's not a concern to us. We go into these partnerships all in, and we provide all the skill that we have, and it's extensive. And we never give in. If we encounter a problem and we can identify it, we look for solutions, which would be the, I would say, the engineering way to go about things. But in a business sense, I think that once you, were you to be introduced to a Ventec system, I don't think we could ever disappoint you. So with that, I will stop talking and let you ask questions.
Thank you, Gary Cat, for that. And again, as well, the picture of mountain scene from Patricia Street is acknowledged and appreciated. Thank you for that. Questions for Mr. Cat? Counselor Butler?
Thanks for that, Gary. I have just one question or thought that I'd like your thoughts on. In Jasper, we have such a variety of different scenarios with respect to hotel accommodation, visitor accommodation. Some of them, all of them are notionally responsible for providing the parking for their guests. But some of them, particularly in the CBD, and some of the older properties simply don't have adequate onsite parking, and we can't expect them to. So it leads me to think about a scenario where the hotel might wish to be able to provide and pay for parking on-street for some of their clients. The idea being that they would collect that through their room rates or otherwise. I suppose by extension, you might see restaurants that don't have a parking lot but would like to, as an incentive for clients, be able to offer that. Is there ways in which that sort of thing can be implemented?
Absolutely, Counselor Butler. So I'll give you an example. And again, we, Ventec, relate probably more closely to parks. I know you're within Jasper National Park, and you're governed somewhat, if not entirely, by the rules of a federal land. But I'll give you a prime example. In Jekyll Island, Georgia, it's a state park. And in this park, there's only one way into it. It has a, let's just say, a little causeway with one lane in, one lane out. And we control the gates into this park through a Ventec system. It's a relatively sophisticated one. It's more like a toll booth than anything else. But in behind the gates are hotels, and there's a college, and a number of other agency-based enterprises that buy permitting. They buy parking rights for their clients through our online system. And we understand those parking rights by controlling the gate access into their state park. So whether you're an open-air parking setting like yours, which with a hotel that wants to offer parking plate, their license plate ABC123, the right to park on the street, to us, to the Ventec system, it doesn't really matter. When it comes time to check the compliance of a particular parker, it's understood that that was bought by Hotel XYZ, and that there should be, there is no problem with compliance of that plate. The other side of it is that the hotel that bought that parking on behalf of their clients, they then, the reporting of the Ventec systems tells the town how much is owed. So they're not off the hook. They just happen to pay for it in bulk for their clients. And it can be individual, it can be as a group, etc. So it's another way to buy parking that doesn't require any fixed pay station, for the record. It's, this is an online buy through what, I flashed up briefly the online permitting system. And merchants can have their own ID and buy as many parking spots for license plates as they like, for their patrons.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
Any more questions? Well, we thank you for the presentation, Gary, and we thank all three presenters this morning. There's a lot of information, and there's a lot of data. Is there any counselors who might want to offer, ask a follow-up question from some of the earlier presentation? There being none, we appreciate the presentation made by John Colley, Joni Eros, and Gary Cat. Thank you very much, and have yourself a good day. And we hope to meet you in person here, one time or another in Jasper.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Have a great week, everyone.
Have a great day.
Counselor Demora?
Oh, I just wanted to let administration know that we lost Counselor McGrath because her screen froze on our end, but she's still here, so she's logged out. because her screen froze on our end, but she's still here, so she's logged out.
Counselor McGrath, we appear to have lost you. I believe you just offline for a minute. Can you respond, acknowledge? Well, she may be offline. Let's move on to our next agenda, item 6.4, skate park presentation.
Hi there.
Good morning.
Good morning. Oh, sorry, there it's working. Okay. Hi.
Go ahead, Daryl.
Hi, sorry, it's the first time I ever use this. So you guys can hear me now? Okay, perfect. So basically, I was gonna ask, obviously, but sorry, I was late on the reply there. I've been busy, had to bring my daughter to college or my wife and they're going to quarantine in Nova Scotia for 14 days. So, but anyways, so I was just, wanted to give you guys an update that we're still out there. We did do a skate jam for the kids there in August 1st and it was well-received. We had a lot of, like 16, 17, 18-year-olds there. We also had some like 10, 11, and 12-year-olds. There's a lot of interest in the project still locally here. And obviously, with the COVID situation going on here, the activity center being closed and, you know, lack of physical stuff being provided in that category, skate parks are becoming very well-used. I was just in Edmonton, Collingwood Skate Park, and there's families there, there's kids there all the time. It's amazing how much they're shining now in this situation. So, I mean, obviously, with the financial situation of people too, it's nice to have affordable options too. But basically, what I wanted to get across today is just, I did go ahead and I sent some emails to Atco Electric. I've been talking to Atco Electric and also to the Rotary Club of Jasper. Sent one out to the Jasper Lions Club and the Freemasons. And I'm just kind of contacting service groups and businesses. I'm also, there's more businesses I'm going to get around to contacting to. I just haven't had time at the moment. But basically, what I'm trying to do is get a feel for what the probability of support will be when and if the town council decides to fully commit to this project. Because I have a feeling that what the problem is, is that a lot of businesses and corporates, potential sponsors and stuff have cold feet because they're worried that this might not come to fruition. But once it does get a commitment from the community or from the government of the community, that we're going to have a lot more coming through the pipe. And obviously, you guys know the plan that we have is to apply to provincial funding through CFAP large stream grant, which will cover half the project cost if we qualify. So that's still our plan. I was talking with Trevor from New Line there and he informed me that CFAP's still doing grants and they have money available for this. So we really would like to hit this up as soon as possible. And that's why I'm trying to show you guys that, you know, there is support out there. I'm going to try to do some screen sharing here. I'm not too sure how to do it, but I'll try to pull it up now because I do have an email that's very, it's a very promising sign of what will happen from Atco here. I'm just going to try to figure this out here, sorry. What do I do here? More. Let's see here. Do you guys know what link I go to to do this screen sharing thing?
Daryl, it should be on the bottom of your screen. Look for a green button, says share screen.
Oh, share content. Here we go, okay. Let's see, screen. Okay. Start recording. All right, here we go. Okay, I think it should be working now. I'm just gonna find this email. Here we go. All right, so do you guys see this now?
Nope.
No, okay. Here we go. Okay, well, we'll scrap that, we don't need that. Yeah, stop it. Sorry about that. We'll just, we'll stop that because I'm not very smart with this stuff. Basically, what it is, is there's an email which I can send to the counselors and stuff after this. It's from Atco Electric and they have 100% guaranteed $5,000 of funding towards the skate park. Along with, we do also have, as you know, a donor that wanted to remain anonymous, local, who has donated $25,000 to our project. And we also have another $20,000 on top of that. So that brings our total currently to $50,000. And that's not including the other like $56,000 that we funded previously and put towards down payment for the project in the first two phases. So our total money that we've raised over the six years is $106,000. That's pretty impressive, I think, considering, you know, and for just overwhelming support we've had. But unfortunately, the construction costs go up 5% to 6% a year. So if we can get this going on sooner than later, I think it will benefit all parties involved. The other email I got was from the Rotary Club of Jasper and it was from Chris. And it was kind of a short notice thing, obviously, just asking if they could give us a probability because they haven't been meeting lately and everything. And I'm looking forward to doing a Zoom presentation with him as well. But basically, they were, Chris reiterated what I was saying, that, you know, that's how it works, right? Is once people know project is a go and it's 100%, they, you know, the funding comes through. And he also said that, you know, it's, yeah, when I do meet with them, we'll have to talk about it. But so the LaCome Skate Park Initiative, I wanted to bring them up too because the New Line had brought this to my attention, that apparently when they had, their community had committed to the project, they had overwhelming support where they actually got all their money back. So, you know, there's historical evidence that this works. So basically, right now, our shortfall, you know, we paid the $56,000, we have $50,000 right now. So our shortfall will be around $350,000 right now because the project's 800 grand. So that's just to give you some numbers there so that you guys kind of know where we're at right now for shortfall. But I'm hoping that when we contact, as we contact more businesses and raise more awareness through emails, I'm hoping that eventually we'll have more sponsorship coming through and I can give you more information. Now, just to give you a heads up, obviously, I'm not asking any questions right now, but I am, you know, if things work out where the town does commit, I am working on getting a CFAP grant application put in before September 30th. That's when the deadline is. So just to give you guys kind of like a timeframe kind of thing, I'm probably gonna try to meet with you guys again and ask a question eventually here. But I just wanted to give you guys a quick rundown and a heads up there. And sorry, I haven't got back to you guys earlier. This is kind of later than I would have liked. It's been a busy summer at our house too, doing renovations and stuff. But yeah, we also want to do, you know, more things with the community and, you know, have, you know, skate jams or whatever, build the community, the skate park community. Because it's, you know, as you guys all probably agree, it's a very positive thing, especially with COVID and the lack of things to do. You know, obviously, respecting the social distancing guidelines and things like this. But the one thing that is good about the skate park sports is that they can be done while doing this. Like it's outdoors and, you know, you don't have to be, you know, right beside another person to do it. But that's pretty much all I really wanted to run down there was just the numbers and what we're doing on our end. And we just did a silent auction, raised about $560 from that, from some generous local business donations. And so we're just plugging away, we're going to keep fundraising. And yeah, I'll try to set up another date for another meeting and we can maybe ask you guys a question and hopefully see where it goes from there. But yeah, I hope that all you guys are having a great summer. And yeah, hopefully, hopefully this project can go through. Oh yeah, actually, there was one more thing I was going to mention, which I'll also send a link to all the counselors. It's very exciting news for Inten. Apparently, they have a mountain biking association, much like our skate park committee, that's vying for an upgraded, updated new skate park in a different location in Inten. So they're going for a second one already. And actually, they're working with New Line Skate Parks as well. So I just found this out this morning. I was looking up articles and found that out, so that's kind of exciting. But yeah, just to give you a kind of an idea that even Inten is going for a second round here. So as you can see, like around the world, around our local neighborhoods, you know, communities are really into this thing right now. So I think the COVID thing is just bringing up how essential these types of amenities are to communities. But yeah, that's pretty much all I have to say. I don't know if there's any questions that need to be asked. I don't know how this works with just the presentation. But yeah, if you guys have any questions, I'm pretty much done my presentation. That was all it was. Sorry, it was so informal.
Thank you, Daryl Savage. Questions from counselors? First of all, go to Counselor McGrath.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Jono. And thank you very much for the update, Mr. Savage. And thank you so much for your ongoing efforts and for your community involvement and your community pride. As you stated, the times that we're in point very clearly at the importance and the value of outdoor recreation space for children and youth. And it's never been as important as today. I feel really optimistic and really passionate about the skate park's future. And I just wanted to thank you for your presentation today.
Thanks for that. Yeah, we really do feel that it's important and I'm glad that the council shares that because yeah, it's gonna be a nice place, like it'll last for like 40 years. And it's, like I said, I was in Edmonton, it was amazing how many people were there. Like it's such a positive thing for a community anywhere you are. So thanks for that, Jenna.
Thank you for that. Thanks for that comment, question from Mr. Fritsch.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Daryl, just for counsel's information, with you coming without giving counsel advance notice, I'd ask just no direct questions on financials this morning, but certainly, I think it'd be appropriate if we had some kind of a conversation now between yourself and counsel just on kind of when to come back and what you might potentially bring back for a question. So that can be organized in advance. So if you could maybe share what your plans are and what your requests might be, and then we can have a conversation with counsel now on when it would be appropriate for you to return with that conversation.
Thanks for that. Are you clear on that, Daryl? Understand the nature of the request?
Yeah, sure. So is this a request via email to you, Mark, or to counsel, or how would I form this one?
Yeah, just, I guess what I'm looking for is just a little dialogue here of what you'd like to return with and then from some feedback from counsel of when they think that would be appropriate to do so.
Yeah, for sure. I will, I'll send that out to you via email, unless you want me to ask right now on the conference. I can do that right now.
I think reply by email will be supposed to suffice for our needs.
Okay, we'll just do it. Yeah, I'll get that and I'll do the email with the links and everything on there. And I'll get that out to you this afternoon. I'll do my best to get that going on.
We have another question from Counselor Butler.
No, thanks, Daryl, for the update, much appreciated. I think maybe what Mr. Fritcher was getting at is that just today, we could clarify what your request might look like when it comes. I realize and appreciate you were kind of asked not to question counsel today because it was last minute. But I think I understood you to say that you're thinking right now is that the contribution you might be looking for from counsel to push this forward would be $250,000. Did I hear that correctly or not?
It was 350. But yeah, you got the idea. It's basically just to cover the shortfall so that I can get CFAP grant drafted up and get that in before the deadline. And then hopefully, you know, we win this one 2021. And, you know, if that's the case, if we win it in 2021, we could start building the skate park next summer. That would be best-case scenario. And then after that, hopefully, you know, when things come down the pipe, if it does end up being a go, you know, all these businesses and things I contact, I'm going to contact them again and see where they're at and see if, you know, they wanted to follow through, you know, so we can get corporate sponsors involved as well so that we have an array of public support to, you know, to help out the town. Because yeah, obviously, you know, I think businesses will want to be on this, you know, it's a landmark. So service groups and businesses, I believe, are gonna definitely be involved when that comes. But just getting to that point so that we can have this thing as a done deal and have that confidence in the community where, you know, it's like, yeah, this is getting built. That's basically where we want to get to. But yeah, I'll write it all in an email and kind of draft it up as best I can here.
I prefer the question from Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, I think we're pretty comfortable in what you're going to bring back to us. I think we've supported in the last two years. So it's really just the financial shortfall. If we were successful with the CFAP, or if you were successful with the CFAP grant, we would ideally match funding to the large CFAP grant that you've applied for in the past. Is that, you know, I think we've seen in the last couple of years and I don't think our support would dwindle. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right, Scott. Yeah, the idea was just, you know, a conditionary basis idea. So it's like you guys aren't, if it falls through a CFAP, you guys won't have to waste funds on, you know, putting it towards. It would all be on, like, it's almost like it's all like built up on what-ifs. But yeah, that's pretty much the idea. You definitely nailed it there.
Thank you for that. Any more questions? Counselor Demora?
Thank you, Mr. Savage. I appreciate the update. And just commend you on the continual effort. I know it's been a long time and you're committed, so it's that we appreciate, at least I do anyway. Just for clarification again, what's the maximum amount on the CFAP grant?
So the CFAP grant, it's actually pretty impressive. The maximum amount they will fund is $1 million. So we are, you know, we're gonna get, hopefully get $400,000 from them, but they go up to a million. They have, yeah, they're huge. So yeah, $1 million.
Thank you for that. We have another question from Counselor McGrath.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono. And just for clarification, Mr. Savage, is this a potential ask of matching funds of $350,000 or $250,000 for the 2021 budget?
It would be 350. And yeah, that's where the number is at currently. I'm hoping to knock that number down as we get more sponsorship, but that's where it's at now.
Thank you.
Councillor Keller MP?
Thank you, Mr Savage, for your presentation. Did you say you need to be back, you needed a decision before September thirtieth, am I correct?
Yeah, that's right, Helen. So hopefully, you know, prior to, let's say, September thirtieth. And what I can do is I can just start writing the CFPAP grant and get everything organized. And then when you guys, if you guys do come through, then it would just be like a letter head from the municipality saying, like same idea like we did with the other CFPAP grant in the past. And yeah, that, that's basically all it would be. September thirtieth is the deadline, but I'll reiterate that in the email and make sure all my information is correct there.
Thank you.
Thank you, any more questions? There being none, thank you very much, Daryl. And we commend you for your individual effort in this program. You've been at it for a long time and it's well noted. Thank you for that and all the best with it.
All right, thanks a lot for all your support over the years too, I really appreciate. And all the time you guys have spent listening to our presentations over the years.
Thank you. Okay. Before, before moving on, do we need a break? We will have a break. It's eleven nineteen. How about eleven twenty-six? Okay, excuse me? Thank you, we'll proceed. Item seven on the agenda policy and governance, first item is seven point one, public health update and concerns. This is a council discussion. I believe councillor McGrath has something to provide to lead it on for us, thank you.
You very much, Deputy Mayor Jono. With the topic of masks in Jasper, there has been a few community residents that have approached me to speak about exemptions in the community of wearing a mask. And without judgment, recognizing that there may be a need for some to be exempt from the mandatory masking bylaw. I'm curious, as other communities have created an exemption card, where a resident may stop in administrative office and without proving anything with a medical note, no questions asked, are receiving an exemption card. And it's my understanding that administratively, we, we don't press anyone that's not wearing a mask, they're not wearing a mask for a medical concern, bylaw doesn't engage and they leave it, which is, which is excellent as far as practice. But when it comes to an individual business and a resident being refused entry to the business because of a medical concern, I feel from a resident standpoint that if they had a card to show at that business that was given to them from the municipality of Jasper versus them engaging in dialogue, that, that may be traumatic and may trigger some mental health reactions, that it's something I'm willing to discuss and asking for council to discuss with me. If we could consider directing administration to make exemption cards fairly simply and have them available, say at the administration office for the very few residents that would need an exemption card to enjoy their quality of life still in Jasper and not be challenged on a daily basis.
You, I too have been approached and they, they indicated to me that we, we made provisions for exceptions and I'm not aware that we did. Maybe they got that from the press, I'm not sure, can, can somebody assist me on that? Did we make provisions for exceptions, exemptions?
That's correct, acting mayor is, is that we don't, if someone says they have a medical condition, that's the end of the discussion. We, we don't press beyond that as a municipality.
So we have a mechanism to allow for exemptions.
That's correct.
Thank you. Councillor Demora?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I believe that those exemptions just refer to bylaw dealing with specific individuals. I think what councillor McGrath is suggesting is that we have some type of card or a way for people to show, you know, particularly locals that need to access essential services. Because right now, if somebody has a mental health issue or a physical ish, health issue, they can't go into a grocery store, post office, et cetera, et cetera, without a mask on. And if it's an issue, they should be able to produce something, whether it's a bracelet or, or a card of some sort. I, I think that maybe we should be looking towards that because it, it makes it quite difficult for certain individuals to, to be able to, to access essential services particularly and, and sometimes often feeling ostracized. And, and I don't, I feel that this should be an inclusive approach. And people shouldn't have to be questioned if they're not wearing a mask. Everybody in the community now knows the process. And I'm hoping that when other locals see somebody else that may or may not be a local, not wearing a mask, that they understand like the most important thing is take care of yourself and really not worry about the other person. But don't pass judgment because you don't know what that person is dealing with. I'm glad that councillor McGrath brought this up. Initially, I had considered having as part of our initial discussion and completely forgot about it. And I apologize to those people in the community for not raising this earlier. And I commend councillor McGrath for bringing it up today. And I think that we should have a system in place to address this.
Thank you, councillor Demora, councillor Butler? Councillor Wilson?
Currently, I'm not in support of this. I think where cards have been introduced, they've become somewhat of a joke. I think they've, that whole process is flopped. I think a doctor's note is, you know, very easily obtainable if there's a, a valid reason why you shouldn't be wearing a mask. And I also don't want to get into the business of forcing a, you know, a store owner that doesn't feel comfortable letting people in with a mask to let that person in. I think if there was a mask or the doctor's note available or, like again, we're not, we aren't, as Mr Fritsch said, enforcing it. We ask, the answer, we, we back off. We, we can't, honestly, I, I think it adds a lot, a lot of work for administration for, for something that I don't think we need to be supplying.
I agree, however, the comment was made if, if he goes to go to grocery store and he says he has an exemption, what does he demonstrate, what does he show? Doctor's certificate? Man wasn't, I don't.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor, just in relation to that last comment. The directive from our bylaw officers have been to take people's word for it, take it at face value if you say you have a medical condition. And that's the message we've been sending to businesses as well. However, how each business decides to manage entry or access to their premises is, is entirely within their own purview. But, but that is the message that we are also providing businesses is to say, if someone says for some reason they can't wear a mask and it falls under the exemptions, just take their word for it, has been our message.
So that message you're providing to businesses, is it proactive or reactive? In other words, how do we get it out there? Are we waiting for them to contact us or have we sent out a general email or contact, or notice to businesses?
It's been part of our communications that we, when we launched the bylaw and communicated with businesses then, it's been a part of our messaging ever since. And if we, if we are contacted, and I, I've been contacted by a few individuals that were planning to visit and asking how will this be handled? And that is our answer as well. But an alternative to, to a card program may be a bit more outreach or ensuring that the word is out there to businesses, that that is the recommended approach from the municipality. But again, how businesses interact with customers on their own premises is entirely up to them.
I, I agree. Thanks for that clarification because I think some of the passes that were issued were for city-owned facilities only and we're not for the general public and that was a confusion as well. But I don't want to make this any more onerous for administration, that's for sure. So hopefully. Councillor McGrath?
Thank you again, councillor Jono. Just remarks and follow-up from comments that have been said. Certainly not asking for a card to be produced for any needs administratively. I believe that our bylaw department is doing an excellent job and have the practices in place. It is for the, the private businesses and, and we're right. And the conversation is correct in stating that the businesses have full jurisdiction over their workplace. You can control who comes in and if they're masked or not. But for a trauma-informed care lens, as I am trained in trauma-informed care, for someone to have to explain their situation to someone at the door of the grocery store is extremely triggering and is unnecessary when it comes down to, to trauma and, and to assisting residents. It would be not onerous at all for our workplace to create a simple card on cardstock paper to print out and it'd be very simple. You walk into an administrative building, you ask for a mask card, you're given one, you're on your way. And there you have something to show at the door of the grocery store, let's say, when it comes to the day that you need to buy groceries. And our residents that do have reasons that are unable to don a mask during these really unprecedented times, don't have to suffer trauma and relive their trauma on a regular basis when they're thinking of picking up their groceries.
Thank you, councillor Wilson.
Could people in those situations not make a card themselves?
Councillor McGrath, did you grasp that question from councillor Wilson?
Yeah, I'm not really looking to engage in debate. Other communities have created these cards and I think it would be a responsible method of providing an exemption card to our residents. Certainly people can make them, will it be trusted if it's not made by the authorities that created the bylaw? I'm not sure. I just am sensitive to the topic and do care about the few residents who have approached me with their concerns.
Thank you, councillor Demora?
I don't think it's an overwhelming cost, it doesn't seem that complicated and it's the right thing to do. It's our bylaw, we set indoor and outdoor. And if it's, if it's causing issues in the community, it's not going to be hundreds of people accessing this. So in an effort to help people feel inclusive in the community and not feel ostracized, it's a very small step to help some people out that have issues. That's all I'm saying, I don't need to have debate on it.
Thank you for that, any feedback, comments? This item is on the agenda for updates and concerns, so, and it's a council discussion, so feel free, councillor Butler?
I realize, I appreciate two councils saying they don't want to debate it, but it's what we do. And I, I guess my concern, and I think I'm just using different words to really put forward what councillor Wilson said is it, to councillor McGrath's point, that would card be accepted if it wasn't issued by the authorities? My problem is that we don't have the authority. Our bylaw says that you're exempt for these seven reasons and you just are. And we're not enforcing it. And what we're really talking about, we're, we're certainly not asking people to demonstrate in any way, we, we are bylaw officers, accept their word. What we're talking about is a person who might fall under one of our exemptions, being allowed into a private space. And I cannot offer that person any guarantee that our card would compel that proprietor to allow that person into the space. So the fact is that it really comes down to, well, who decides whether you have an exemption? And our bylaw really says you yourself decide. If you decide you're exempt, you're exempt. So if we issue cards, then we're saying that it's our decision. And I don't actually particularly like that, I certainly don't want to see our organization judging who's, to whom it applies. So I'll say that, I certainly won't object if we want to issue cards. But it's really not for us to say whether someone is exempt. It's for that individual to say whether they're exempt.
Thank you for that comment, councillor Butler, councillor Calaver MP?
It's kind of a difficult one because it's up to every retailer, whether they want to allow somebody into the business or not. I'm wondering if the Cottage Clinic may, rather than a certificate, like just have a card saying, and because, you know, maybe then a retailer, because it came from the Cottage Clinic, we're more inclined to allow it. But that's still no guarantee, like I think it's up to the individual stores. But if it's a health reason, maybe the Cottage Clinic may, may make up some cards and they give them to the residents that need them. But again, that doesn't mean to say the retailer may or may not allow people to enter their store.
Thank you for that. It is a medical issue, not municipal issue, right? Thank you. But I do have, under public health updates and concerns, we still have a pandemic. Can't let our guard down. We have school seasons, seasons starting here right away next week. And there's a lot of concerns, there's lots of objections, a lot of comments see the way. It's a concern and that it is a big step, it's a big step in that we have, we should be working hard to get our kids in school. But at the same time, this morning, I heard that our cases across Canada are on the rise. So we can't let our guard down. And that's an item that was going to be covered under the program, CBC program called Current, which of course I couldn't listen to, but I will try and find an update. The other thing that we have coming on the corner is flu season. So that's, there's a lot of things and we have been coming up in our agenda here, I requested reopen early. I think that we should approach it with caution. I mean, life will change because we still have a pandemic before us. Thank you. Councillor Demora?
Yeah, because of our public spacing initiative with the on-street seating, the, the parking seating on, on the main street and, and various other areas in the community, it's been brought to my attention that vehicle traffic at the onset of the thirty zone, the new thirty zones in the community, are taking a while down the block before they realize that they're going faster than the posted speed limit. So I, I guess what I'm saying is at the entrance area of the thirty kilometer zones, it's not really being obeyed well. And vehicles are often going too fast from some of the businesses that are on that, in that area. So I, I understand at one point that we had purchased some flashing signs, that some extra ones that we had in town and, and I'm not sure if, if we still have those or if they would be available or if, if administration's interested in, in going in that direction. But I, I think that maybe a, a little bit more of an alert of approach to the change in the speed zones might be helpful.
Thank you, does administration have any?
Yeah, we'll cover the management meeting tomorrow, look into that.
Thank you. Councillor Butler?
I guess, thank you, just to come back to the mask and exemptions. I think my point would be on that, that I believe the spirit of our bylaw is that all anyone would have to say if challenged by anyone, our bylaw officers or store proprietor, really is, I can't wear a mask. And I don't think a person has to say why. I think they just have to say, I can't wear a mask. And I wonder if that is clear to the business proprietors who are probably in best spirit trying to comply with the bylaw? That our bylaw contains provisions for exemptions and that really, our view is that all a person has to say is, I can't wear a mask and that should be it. We, we couldn't force a proprietor to allow that or any other person to go into their premises. And I'm wondering if we would really if we would really gain anything by producing a card, or if that would even, in the end, help those people that are uncomfortable, who either have a condition or for some reason, other reason, aren't able to wear a mask. I'm kind of wondering, Council McGrath's view on that, since you've been contacted by people. I'm wondering if everyone's available, that really all you have to say is, I can't wear a mask. I don't think reasons have to be given. I think that's clear. And maybe what we need to do is just communicate a little more clearly with our partners in the businesses that in our view, while we can't tell you who you can and can't let in your in your property, that that is all that is required.
Councilor McGrath.
Thank you, Councilor Butler. I do believe that that would help the increased communication with the individual proprietors in our town. Just for a, for a little more knowledge and a little more understanding, since trauma-informed training is not something that very many individuals have went through. So someone that is manning the front of a store wouldn't necessarily have that same level of awareness of what others have experienced in life that might contribute to them not being able to wear a mask. And and the residents that I've spoken with, it's, it's more or less, they try to walk in and they're told that they can't walk in without a mask. They have a response and then it becomes a back and forth and they're not willing to engage in an argument or they don't want to engage and they end up leaving and not being able to to use the service, which certainly is the decision of the proprietor to not allow people in with masks. But if we did have a an increased communications campaign where our administration reached out to the businesses, just as they have already, to maybe say something as simple as the words, I can't wear a mask. If they're said to you by someone, that means that they fall under the municipal bylaw exemption. And it is still your choice whether you let them in your premise or not. But just having a little sensitivity to these few people that will be affected adversely by the bylaw we've created.
Thank you. Councilor Calaver MP and then Councilor Butler.
With the communication, should we give each business a copy of the bylaw? And where it's highlighted that these are the exemptions? And if they had that posted on the door of their businesses, then all staff members would know? Would that be cumbersome?
Ms. Nado.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono through the Councilor Calaver MP. The the going door-to-door and speaking to businesses is time-consuming. There's no question about it. How we communicate electronically through the Chamber of Commerce and through our partners and update our website and have a sort of reiterate that message on social media is a is a more administrative approach, if you will, in terms of it happens at a distance and and from an indoor facility, if I may put it that way. Of course, we can go out and speak to businesses again, or we also have our bylaw officers have been helping us in that one-to-one contact. So I think it's, it's it's a concern that emerged and we can certainly integrate it in our ongoing communications if if council wanted specific items like distribution of a printed byline, things like that, we would need some clear direction on that front and everything is possible. It takes time, but it's it's part of the, there's a strong education component to this bylaw, similarly to when we had a ban on plastic bags. I mean, it triggers a lot of communications after, right? So so we are ongoing and doing that work. So we're open to receiving direction from council, of course.
Councilor, Councilor Butler, you were about to raise a point. Thank you for that. Councilor Calaver MP.
Council McGrath, is it mainly kind of grocery stores, pharmacies that our residents are having problems like you know, I mean, like, is it restaurants? Like, kind of where is the base of the problem?
Council McGrath, did you grasp that?
I would say.
Yes, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I would say that more generally in private retail locations in Jasper and I wouldn't necessarily point out the grocery stores specifically, though they have been used because of the essential nature of that type of shopping that someone can't necessarily go without. But you know, there is options as, as maybe the food delivery services are still available. So I don't necessarily want to make this a big thing. It was, you know, asked to me, do I need to carry a medical note around or do I get a psychologist's note or what applies? And, and I followed up with an email to administration and was told by our CAO that actually you don't need proof and our bylaw isn't challenging, our bylaw officers are not challenging someone that states that they're not wearing a mask for medical reasons. And and I think that's wonderful that we can do that within our organization and lead by example, but just to give the residents of Jasper a little a little understanding in their own situations. You know, maybe having a doctor's note in your pocket is enough and is what someone should do or just stating it. But I don't expect for all frontline workers to have have the knowledge and the training in trauma-informed care to be as sent to the needs of residents as might be needed in certain situations.
Thank you for that. Ms. Nado.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono. Sort of building up on Councilor Calaver MP's point, perhaps something that would be simple for administration to implement would be to specifically approach our essential services. So when we're talking about grocery stores, pharmacies, and we have a list of what those are, and those can certainly be we can reinforce that message of if someone tells you, I can't wear a mask, you just take their word for it and make sure that those areas are covered and then generally just include it in our messaging and ensure that when we do communicate with businesses, we're we're ensuring that the exemptions clause is better understood. And I think that would be a course of action that would be easy enough for us to implement, subject to further council direction, of course.
Thank you for that. Can we conclude the mask exemption subject? Thank you, Councilor Demora.
I apologize for interjecting with that speed limit thing. I thought we'd moved on from the mask issue and it seemed like an awkward spot to be talking about it and I apologize.
That was okay. I felt that it was something to do with safety, so I did, I did include that in the topic and therefore that was fine. Councilor Butler.
I just want to be clear, have we given direction? Have we given adequate direction? Council McGrath did bring up an issue which I think, while we don't all necessarily agree on the best approach, I think we all agree an approach is needed. And have we given direction here before we abandon this, at least direction that we six of us are satisfied with, that we will approach this by asking administration to include in their communications. We would do that in all the ways we have been communicating on this issue. That simple statement that someone is unable to wear a mask should be adequate from the point of view of the municipality, while we understand we can't force proprietors to act in any circular way. Are we satisfied with that? Thank you.
All right.
Sorry, I just, I'm not sure we're always clear for administration what our direction is. And I just wanted to be sure in this case we were. Thank you.
That's a very valid point, Councilor Butler. Thank you for that. I thought that we had come up with some on the essential services and I thought that that answered. But thank you for bringing that up because you're right, we often are not clear to administration. So can we conclude item 7.1? Thank you. We'll move now to item 7.2. Council strategic priorities update. Again, a council discussion and it is being led by does it fall back on my shoulders? I saw Councilor Wilson's hand up first.
Well, I think this has come up, it's a standing item. I think Mark had mentioned on so any councillor can speak to it if there's anything to speak about. But as a request of council, many months ago, this ended up being a standing item.
So I will task you with chair, starting the discussion from council. None? Thank you. Butler.
I was about to say what Council Wilson did and to point out that I think right now, for the purpose of the record, our council's foremost priority right now is focused on seeking a replacement for our sadly departing CAO. So I don't know if he's sadly departing, but we're sadly seeing him go.
You're right.
That is our priority right now.
That is our priority. Thank you for that. Councilor Demora.
Yeah, just to reiterate that, we'd asked to have that on there and I remember supporting it just because we didn't want some of our initiatives to fall off the radar. And we were initially planning to have a strat plan meeting last week, but with recent news, we have to adjust our path a little bit. And that's not to say that we shouldn't be having a strat plan meeting recap so that Mr. Furchill can address anything, any loose ends that we need tying up or any recommendations or ideas of attainability for some of our targets.
Thank you for that, Councilor McGrath.
I just wanted to thank administration for their work in bringing the three vendors for paid parking to the committee of the whole May this morning. It's super helpful to have administration continue to drive the strategic priorities of council forward. And you know, we set these strategic priorities and as Councilor Butler explained, our priorities are probably shifting right now and we'll take a backseat to hiring our new chief administrative officer. But today we had some presentations and alternative revenue is a strategic priority of councils. And even since the pandemic has begun, my personal values and and being attached to the the subject of paid parking has possibly even changed. So I'm not sure where I sit necessarily with prioritizing my objectives, but I really thank administration for continuing to move council's strategic priorities forward. And today was a great example of that.
Thank you, Councilor McGrath. Anything else on this item? Thank you. We will move along to item eight, brief updates. First one is item 8.1, reopening of the Activity Centre. And we have a package in our agenda, or a presentation in our agenda package. Mr. Furchill, would you like to speak to this?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And the Director of Culture Rec is standing by, available to speak now if you want. Are you up on the screen?
Yes, I'm here. Can it be? Can you hear me? I got nothing.
You're coming through. You just had one glitch, but you're coming through now.
There, now we go. I think I've got you now. Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. In the recommendation, I will highlight some changes that were made on the last request for decision. So under recommendations, you will see that the amount now states $30,000 to reopen the Activity Centre due to reduced hours, also focusing on local events only and no major staffing changes. So no major staffing changes are included, just reduced hours are included in this request for decision. Under options, we did also include the another option of approve an additional net deficit of $28,000 to reopen the Activity Centre starting October 4th, 2020 for local use and reduced hours as outlined in this report. Another thing to update on page two of the report is Grand Yellowhead Public School Division has advised that out-of-school care program can no longer operate in the schools at this time due to the additional cleaning requirements and workload for custodians. It appears community use of schools is also impacted across the division. The out-of-school care program currently operates out of the Curling Lounge and requires dedicated bathrooms to meet current health protocols. The program will have to be relocated once the Curling Club lease starts mid-October and likely somewhere within the Activity Centre. Trying to find a location large enough for this group is definitely challenging with the private bathrooms. And on the third page, you'll see that added to the bottom of user group access is the out-of-school care program will need a space to operate this fall. Any questions?
Any questions by council? Councilor McGrath, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono, and thank you, Mrs. McNabb, for your report for the Activity Centre reopening. From the dates of September 21st to the date of October 4th, the difference is $2,000 and I'm certainly not going to get hung up on the discrepancy of $2,000 in this timeline here. But I am focused on the out-of-school program having a location. It's really important to secure a location by October. There are parents in our community who rely on this program who will greatly benefit from us making space available for their children to be cared for while they finish off their day at work. Out-of-school care for some families is the difference of earning an income and not earning an income. And I would happily reopen the Activity Centre on whichever date council decides moving it to and making sure that in our reopening plans that we also include a facility with a washroom to make sure that out-of-school care has somewhere to operate out of come mid-October.
Thank you for that. Comments, questions? Councilor Butler.
Thank you. I have a question for clarification on the update under demand for service. Probably for Mrs. McNabb. It says here that the out-of-school care program is, sorry, I'm trying to find it. It's currently operating out of the Curling Lounge. So is the out-of-school care currently operating now? And if it is currently now operating, because school isn't in, so I'm unclear on that. Is it currently operating out of the Curling Lounge?
Actually, what it is, it's the summer fun program that is being run out of the upper Curling Lounge presently. So they have a private entrance that they go up, so they are not accessing the Activity Centre in any way, shape or form other than just that particular location.
Thank you.
Okay, you're saying this is an after-school program, but it's summer. Isn't it a summer fun program? Can please clarify this for me? Thank you.
I can answer that one. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono. It's the program is, I hope I do justice to Ms. Daniel right now, the out-of-school care program. The summer version of out-of-school care is summer fun. So it is the same program. It's run by Wildflower Child Care. It is a municipal program. It's just called something different in the summer because school is out, therefore it's called summer fun. But it is the same or similar curriculum staffing. It's the same program.
Thank you for that. So this is before us for information. We indicated we would make a decision on September 1st. Council Butler.
I'm happy to see this come back for September 1st. I'd like to make the point that I believe the direction we were looking toward last time we discussed this and happy if anyone wishes to correct me on this, but that we were looking for alternatives to opening the Activity Centre for were looking for alternatives to opening the activity center for a set number of hours, set numbers of days a week in order to be able to meet any needs of community groups that want to use it. And I think some of us have felt that the need to open the facility and keep it sitting there open when it's probably unused and empty a lot of the time is what is of concern to us. And I guess I would say that this is an example, the facility is closed, but we are able to accommodate summer fun. I think that's the kind of thinking that we need to look at. And I don't think we've really seen that kind of a proposal here, just a change of dates and a minor, a little bit of a change of budget. I respect that if administration doesn't feel that there are other viable alternatives, then they won't be offered to us. And maybe in that sense, it's asked and answered. But I think that's what we were hoping to look for.
Thank you for that. Need some feedback on that?
Mr. Deputy Chair through to council, I guess on that front with staffing, part of the issue is we don't really have a model of being able to hold staff as and when, like an on-call basis for that type of a service. It's just the way that this would operate, it's very minimal levels of staffing so that as gymnastics or anything that occurs, there's some minimal level of administration of the building and whether the doors to the outside are open or not for access to Glenda's would be another matter. But, you know, whether the building is open or not, this is running at the very bare minimum level of staffing. Should there be an event, we have to staff up for events. But there's the certain amount of staff that, like a very bare minimum, like I'm talking barely anybody for just sort of having the building open in quotation marks, but it's really not that open, like fully operational. This is bare minimum. And then should there be events, we staff up. And the alternative, I think what you're talking about is keeping the doors closed and having potentially nobody in there and having staff that we keep at home and then call back and keep at home and call back. And we're not, we're not really set up for that type of a position to do that type of a service. Some of the other event type staff we could, but not necessarily the main ones. So that would be, you know, changing staffing models with the union and with positions. And whether we could actually find someone for that job would be a whole nother matter. So it just depends to what depth and level council wants to go. But at this, what we're presenting is sort of the bare minimum, what we feel to achieve what we believe was asked. It's everything from dealing with building alarms to having a group in there that needs something or if an alarm goes off while an individual or a group is in there or having individuals enter the building that weren't supposed to be in there. There's a myriad of things that occur that, you know, I could go on and on where we do need to, if we're going to have it open as a building owner, we have to maintain a minimum level of responsibility with the facility. And that's basically all we're asking for here is just the bare, bare minimum of our ability to maintain ownership of the building and our responsibility should it be accessible by anyone. And in this case, we're talking locals only.
Councillor Demora first. I'm sorry. Go ahead, councillor Butler.
Thanks, sorry. I would only respond and say, thanks. That's, that's a good, fair answer. It certainly did address my point. I understand better. So thank you.
Councillor Demora?
Hi to Mr. Chair through to Mr. Furchill. Appreciate that breakdown and it makes sense to me and I trust your judgment. So thank you for breaking that down for us.
Councillor Wilson?
Just to go back to councillor McGrath's comments about giving the opportunity to, for out of school care space in our, in our building, I would definitely 100% support that. But my question, I guess, is to Mr. McNabb is what space would you think we'd be offering? You know, I think you wouldn't want to shove them into the upper curling lounge and then move them out. Would you be thinking about offering them the activity center gymnasium type area for for use during these times or what are you thinking?
Mr. Chair through to councillor Wilson. We actually have a meeting this afternoon that we're going to be discussing options and locations and to see how we might be able to accommodate it, especially with private bathrooms and other events. Because once the out of school care program comes into place, ideally, they are not able to bounce around from room to room with, with events and those types of things. So it's trying to find them a location where they can have a bathroom, access to the bathrooms privately and make sure that we can accommodate all their requirements in this, in this COVID time. So that meeting is happening this afternoon.
Thank you for that. Councillor Keller-Hempe?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. A question for Mrs. McNabb, but how many children are in out of school care?
Mrs. McNabb, did you get that question? How many children are in the after-school care, correct?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm having difficulty unmuting. Unfortunately, I cannot give you those numbers. And presently, I don't believe that, that the children's center is going to be able to give you accurate numbers until we know exactly what's going to be happening with the school program and how many kids are going to be coming in. So there's quite a few changes that have come down with the schools opening. There are things like the, in the documentation that indicates that lunches will have to be taken off-site. So kids will be sent home for lunches. That may mean that we need to, to provide a location for kids to go to school in order to have their parents be able to work. These are all things that are just coming down the pipe. And so we don't know numbers and we don't have all the answers yet.
Councillor Keller-Hempe, go ahead.
I'm just curious, how many children are in the summer fund this year?
Mr. Chair through to councillor Keller-Hempe. I don't have those numbers, unfortunately. Lisa, I'm not sure if she's on this program right now would be able to answer that, but I don't have her numbers.
That's okay. If we'd have them for next week, I'm just kind of curious on the size of space because I was thinking like, you know, how it worked, if it worked well in the curling lounge and there was a lot of kids for summer fun, then maybe that's the ideal place for the kids in the winter. I mean, just curious.
Councillor Butler?
Thanks, Mrs. McNabb. I realize the situation is evolving, but I just want to clarify what I thought I just heard, which was that we might have to find a place for kids to go to school. Or did I mishear?
Yes, that was, that was not the comment. It was for lunches because the lunch, apparently the schools, kids are not going to be allowed to have their lunch at school. They're going to be asked to go home for lunch. So that may be something that we're going to need to figure out with the out of school care program is, is there a location where the kids can go for lunch so that parents can continue to work?
Just, I can clarify that. Mr. Chair through to councillor Butler, I got an email last night from the school about kids at school and it, and outside of Lake Edith, where there used to be a program where kids could stay at school to eat their lunches. Only Lake Edith kids now, apparently, or that kind of distance out, JPL, I should say, not Lake Edith, G P L. I drive by there all the time with my mountain bikes, I confuse it too. That's, that's the only group. So there, there will be a group of kids that typically had a place to go for lunch that won't have a place to go for lunch come this fall.
So what are we considering to be offering?
It was just the awareness that that's another factor at play in the community.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Keller-Hempe.
So we'd just be responsible though for the children in our out of care that may need to come for lunch? We wouldn't be responsible for every kid in the school that needs a place to go for lunch, am I right?
This, the idea is just that council is aware of what's happened in the past is like with Glenda's being open at lunchtime, kids would come there for lunch sometimes too and use the table. So just, just an awareness, there was no recommendation on that. Literally that email just came out, it was either last night or the night before.
Thank you for that. So the matter is evolving. Thank you. Anything else? So this is information, sharing of information on the reopening of the activity center. So thank you for that. Item 8.2 custodial services for the reopening of the library. And we have a package or an attachment in our package.
And Mr. Chair, once again, I'm going to ask the director of Culture and Rec to speak to this one. This is the new development with the announcement of the opening date for the library and of course, some of the requirements on cleaning around COVID. So go ahead, you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So the request for decision is for additional custodial services. The recommendation is that council approve the expenditure of $12,400 to provide additional custodial services for the library and cultural center, starting September 2nd, pending staff availability and training. In the background, on June 16th, one custodial position was funded for recall in the amount of $35,000, which allowed for the reopening of Knott Washrooms, partial reopening of the library cultural center in order for the Jasper Artists Guild to reopen. On August 4th, an additional net deficit of 9,000 was approved to accommodate additional cleaning of Knott Washrooms and the log cabin. New information has been brought forward that the library board approved to reopen the library on September 2nd with adjusted hours. Presently, we have limited custodian hours assigned to the facility to accommodate the opening of JAG only. We are receiving lease and janitorial revenue from the library as already reflected in the 2020 budget. Additional custodial hours will be required for the library cleaning, starting September 2nd, due to heightened response for pandemic cleaning and protocols. There is a demand for library service for public computer access, printing, photocopying services, regular library users, users, especially adults and senior age ranges. They're waiting to be able to come in and browse the shelves. As school restarts, there will be a demand for students for reading and resource materials. Most of the library use is local traffic from fall to spring. Part of the strategy is to open in September, or part of the strategy to open in September is to work out the details and identify concerns before the higher demand for service comes in the winter. Strategic relevance is the municipal mission statement, the community vision, Jasper residents' value and promote quality service and affordability, organizational health, enhancing operational effectiveness, responsiveness, adaptability and public and community health and safety. Improve public safety, security and community resiliency. Any questions?
Any questions for Mrs. McNabb? Councillor Butler? Councillor McGrath, you will be first. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono, and thank you, Mrs. McNabb. I definitely see this as a reasonable expense. The cost of janitorial and custodial services everywhere is important as we combat this pandemic and costs are, are going to be on the rise to operate safely during a pandemic. The library is a really, really important and valued resource in our community. And many of us will be choosing to keep our children home from school and require more resources and more of a community hub from our library. So I, as the library board representative, am looking forward to library safely reopening on September 2nd and resuming service for the residents of Jasper. And I find the need for increased janitorial and custodial services as a reasonable request.
Thank you for that. Councillor McGrath? Councillor Butler?
Thank you. I'm just wondering if we know what sort of restrictions, social distancing, spacing, masking requirements? The library is planning to impose, I have some concern, while I certainly want residents to be able to gather. Gathering is something that's difficult to do now. And I do have concerns about the library becoming a place where transmission could be possible. And the second part of the question is whether the library is planning to restrict access to residents only. That wasn't quite clear to me as there was a reference to demand from residents now, but an anticipated greater demand, I thought, from visitors later in the season. Thank you.
Councillor McGrath?
Thank you, councillor Butler. I feel as the council representative on the library board that I should answer this question. The library board has spent many, many hours over the summer and since the closure in March, discussing the safe work practices and the safety protocols to operate during the pandemic. I don't have all of them in front of me at the moment, but I will follow up and ensure that I get an email to council to ensure that you have that information sent to you.
Also, McGrath, I have a question for you. That, did the Library Association of Alberta, did they come up with a protocol for libraries in our province?
Yes, councillor Jono, the Yellowhead Regional Library, our local library board, as well as the Alberta Trustees Association, has provided our local library board with many, many resources, lots of safe work practices and operating procedures, as well as some studies and refinement on things like how long a book needs to be quarantined for before it's no longer able to carry infections. Been lots of hard work done by libraries across the province of Alberta. And our library is following best practices that are supplied by the, by the boards and the authorities.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much. No more questions? We can move on? Sorry, Ms. Nadal?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just want to point out that, given the timeline of the reopening of the library, this is here for discussion today, but there would be a waiver of notice requested for September 1st, so it would be. I'm having a hard time finding my words. Wave notice and make a decision next week.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We can move on to next item, 8.3 communications coordinator. Again, you have in our agenda package and who speaks to this, Ms. Nadal? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. This is here for discussion for the second time after council gave notice of decision at the last regular meeting. And following discussions last week, we've updated the recommendation to reflect the conversation that happened at the council table, that council approved the creation of a full-time continuous communications coordinator position in the Legislative Services Department. So that would take care of the permanent nature of the position without committing council in any way to how to fund it for, for the future and approving an additional net deficit of $13,000 for the remainder of 2020. So, and we've placed some of the other information in italics below the recommendation to, to support that discussion. But the main change you'll see, that is the only change you'll see to this report, is how the recommendation is worded. And this is here for council discussion and questions. And I'm happy to answer any questions that may arise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've had some discussions on this before. Any more questions? Councillor McGrath?
Thank you, councillor Jono. I'm wondering from administration, I'd like to understand more of the duties that are currently being done that would see as if we did not create a communications position, please.
Deputy Deputy Mayor Jono, through to Counselor McGrath. Some, the, the reason we came here or the, why this is here before, before council at this point is, as we've explained before, there are some communications duties that are currently being filled by a staff member who works in a different department and functioning outside of their job description. So essentially has taken on an increased workload during the pandemic and trying to resolve more permanently that situation is why we're here. And so what I can speak to is the work that that individual is, is currently doing that has to be reassigned or go somewhere else or cease altogether depending on the outcomes. But so those items include a weekly staff newsletter, graphic design for social media and the web, but also the web as in our website. And also all of the graphic design that was created for the Keep Jasper Safe campaign was also done by that individual. Some of this could be contracted out from a graphic design standpoint, but certainly the day-to-day items that we require for posting on the website and social media is, is part of those services. Strategizing around social media posts and creating campaigns and all that. We work collaboratively, but there's definitely a lot of initiative and effort coming from the, the current communication specialist in the CFS department for that. So, so that would be a loss if we don't have the resources to continue. Responding to inquiries from the community on Facebook. So there's also this direct interaction that is another method that the, the public can reach out to the municipality now with our Facebook presence. So monitoring those and answering those. The COVID-19 mutual aid page is a municipal endeavor. Arguably, this was created as part of the Community and Family Services mandate, so that could potentially remain with that position and that department specifically. And there's been some messaging support around some crisis communications and, but more generally just messaging graphic design for the Public Health Campaign, against some collaboration between myself and, and another individual here. But, but a lot of idea generation and strategizing happening in that level as well. So those are, that's the list I can provide to specifically answer your question, but in a nutshell, i- if that resource were to go away completely, I mean, essentially we would revert to how we functioned pre-pandemic, which means we would be offering a, a basic level of communications through our website and advertising and advertising and things like that. But graphic design and social media being for sure the two most visible and noticeable changes in service levels that we would see.
Thank you for that. I have a question myself. As you mentioned, Facebook, we have regular updates on Facebook, almost daily in some cases. I think they're very well done. Appreciate it. Is Facebook the mechanism nowadays for that kind of style of communication pretty well? I realize the newspaper has, has their own as well, but Facebook?
Yes, thank you for that question, Deputy Mayor Jono. It's a, that's definitely where the community is. I think not everyone necessarily interacts on Facebook or will, will like or will share or will comment. But in terms of reach for our residents in Jasper specifically, people are on Facebook. There's no question about it. And people might scroll through their Facebook feed and see our updates and get their information that way. The chance of them going directly to our website without that social media prompt is you really have to be looking and go out of your way to go on our website to find the information versus on Facebook. It's pushed directly to your feed and we've seen some very good response from the community in, in increasing our, the amount of communications that goes out and, and it is daily. We do post daily and schedule posts for the weekend and there's some strategy behind it, but that is part of keeping people engaged, keeping people interested in our content. And, and this has been administratively an item that we were aware that most other communities are on Facebook. It doesn't mean we need to be, but it's certainly having the reach and, and creating the outcomes we're looking for. And like I mentioned last week, the social media piece itself is not justification for a full-time position, but integrated in a full-time position as part of, as of better and more proactive communications in general is, is a key item for that position we're requesting for sure.
Thank you for that. I commend you for the work that you have done in this, during this crisis and support any recommendations from administration to improve and work with other departments. We've already talked about cardboard communications, so on and so forth. So I commend you for the work that's been done to date. So thank you for that. Questions, comments from counselors? Counselor McGrath?
Thank you. Communications is, is really important for the transparency of an open and honest government. And I see the direction that we've moved in, in recent months as a really valuable asset and tool, resource to residents and to us, the decision makers in the community. After speaking with some communication specialists in the province, I'm curious about engaging in a discussion in the proposed placement of this within the organization's structure. I'm wondering if council has an appetite to discuss this position and where it's at in the organization. As I see legislative services as such a different skill set from communications, the value for me is more looking at this position as a direct report to the CAO versus an embedded position within legislative services. In other communities, it is placed directly under the CAO, reporting to the CAO and therefore an ununionized position. And I'm curious if council has an appetite to engage this direction of seeing where this position could be placed differently than the proposed placement.
Thanks for that comment and research on that point. Thank you very much, Counselor McGrath. Counselor Demora?
Well, I want to, I, every time I bring up the word union, I feel like we have to go into cameras and things, so I don't want to be offside. I just, I personally don't understand at this point why this needs to be a unionized position. And it's not that I'm opposed to, to having a union. I just think that when it comes down to communications management, why can't, why can't we just have a communications manager and, and have a proper set of their job task lists supported by the position. Right now, we have potential responsibilities of, of the communications person. And I'd, I'd like to see something a little bit more detailed. And, and I fully agree with, with Counselor McGrath. And it's not to take away from anything within the structure that we have here or the people in it. I just, I feel that we talked earlier about having some support for a CAO. And because this isn't going to be, or it's kind of said that it's not an entirely full-time position for communications in itself. I'm wondering if we can have someone that would be a support to the CAO and be part of the communications.
Thanks for the suggestion, recommendation, suggestion. Counselor Demora, any feedback? Ms. Nadal?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono, through to council, Counselor McGrath, Counselor Demora, but all other counselors as well. There are two, two different ways to approach this and indeed, reporting directly to the CAO is, is an approach that is in place in other communities. But it, it is also quite commonplace to have a coordinator-type, unionized position, reporting to a corporate services manager of sorts with, which is essentially between finance and admin and legislative, Mrs. Malincheck and I, we have a bit of a different structure here. So anyway, a, a unionized communications coordinator reporting to a manager or a director and not directly to the CAO is, is just as commonplace, I would suggest, as a communications position that reports directly to the CAO. And as Counselor McGrath mentioned, when that is the case, when there is a direct report to the CAO, you would be looking at more of a management position or at least a, a senior communications person, depending where that lands in with the union and the org chart and, and grid placement and things like that. But essentially, the day-to-day nature of the tasks, it's, it's an interesting situation because I've been a unionized communication officer myself in this organization, as well as a communications manager under a direct report to the CAO. And the challenge with the management position is that a lot of those duties related to this area are very much coordinator in nature in terms of monitoring the Facebook page, creating content for the website, coordinating advertising, dealing with media inquiries, so filtering the questions from journalists and organizing answers and things like that. So there's a lot of, of more coordinator-like duties. And then where the management responsibilities fall are more around planning approvals, strategies, and working together with that individual who would be in a coordinator position as we are presenting it. The challenge with a coordinator position as it sits, reporting directly to the CAO, for example, my thoughts on this is that the CAO doesn't have the time and the, the attention to detail that's required for approval and strategy and planning, putting that on the CAO's plate is, is a big ask. Therefore, having a management position that would report to the CAO in communications would make more sense because that person would be more independent and responsible for making those decisions and not constantly sort of going back to the CAO for approvals essentially. So the need we recognize within the organization right now is more at a coordinator level, a doer, were the words used by the mayor last week. So someone to physically take the time and make those posts and edit the website. And because the reality of how things are happening without that position is that I happen to have the skills to do this because I've done it in the past, therefore I never seem to get rid of those duties. I'm still doing things I was doing 10 years ago. And arguably, my time would be spent better doing something different, right, in my legislative manager position. Ms. Byrne has been excellent in, in stepping in and being my one person I can delegate to currently. So she's built up the communication skills and has the ability to, to fill in on those types of duties. But having someone else on that team to dedicate their time to communications is, is how we see the organization moving forward. And like I said, the direct report to the CAO would be possible, but the, the nature of the position would change and the level of responsibility, therefore the compensation and the structure. And if that's a, this, a discussion council wants to engage in, that's one item, but that is not what we're asking for currently, but it, it could go that way. Thanks.
Counselor Demora? Were you following up on what you had just brought up?
And I appreciate the feedback. And so right now is the current coordinate coordinator position that we have. Is that a unionized position as well? Like, so then on the org chart, it would be you and then the two coordinators like this.
If I may, Deputy Mayor Jono, yes. So we're in a bit of a, an interesting situation where the legislative services coordinator position is not unionized. And that is historical from when it used to be the administrative officer. Position was never unionized as well. And the nature, the sensitive nature of some of the legal matters we deal with in the council business is, is what leads us to having this position as not unionized. But the proposed communications coordinator position would be a union position. And I meant to cash that on, on the last comment, there is work for a full-time position in communications. It is, it is not.
I thought I misunderstood.
No, and that's fair. And I know we've discussed in the past additional support to the CAO. And I think the way I've framed this in the past was if we had a more dedicated communications position, the legislative services coordinator is where that additional support to the CAO, which is more an administrative skill set could, could come from. So it would free up some time on currently Ms. Byrne's plate to provide that additional support to the CAO perhaps, but we could also use an administrative executive assistant to the CAO, but that's not what we're here with today.
Counselor Callahan, MP?
So Ms. Nadal, currently the position that we have communication falls under FCS, correct? So this person now is currently doing these duties, right? So if we hire this position, then that communications coordinator just works directly for FCS and they have their own communications department? Or is that job part communications and part something else like, or is it all communication?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono, through to Counselor Keller, her MP. Yes, so, so it is, it is a different position and I have a, an exhaustive list here of, of what that position does. And you are right in mentioning that there is a lot of communications work that happens in that position. But there is also a portion of administrative work that is embedded in the current Community and Family Services Communication Specialist position. And as, as things shift and, and the organization evolves, determining how that functions is, is, is up for discussion, I guess. But so there are some very specific communications items that come out of that department. And the informal relationship, if you will, that I currently have, or the Legislative Services Department, which is responsible for communications, has with that arm of the CFS department is that this, this dedicated communications position is given more leeway with their communications items than, than anyone else in the organization is recognizing that there is a skill set there and there is some knowledge and some competence in being able to approve their own materials essentially. And it is always under the supervision of the director, related directly to CFS initiatives. So it's about programming or services or events that are specifically related to that department. So it, that position supports corporate communications, if you will, as in we work together. But they are not responsible for any approvals or development of more corporate items unless requested. And that's kind of how we landed in, in the situation where we are with this increased service level during the pandemic. So we have a good working relationship. It is informal, as in there's no ties formally between the two departments. And, and there is quite a bit of material that comes out of that position that truly supports the funding that the, the, the department receives and contributes to the success of the department. And therefore it's all linked in the, in the external funding that we get from the province, right? So, but having that said, that position does have an administrative component to it in terms of supporting the director, participating in writing and reviewing funding proposals, which arguably is a bit more of an administrative skill set than a communication skill set. So I'm not sure that answers the question.
Go ahead, Counselor, uh, Callahan, MP.
And I'll direct this to Mr. Fertow because I'm not, maybe you can answer it. So for that position over in the FCS department, is that funded through a grant or is that funded through the municipal tax?
We are in a bit of an interesting situation with the pandemic. So the way the 2020 budget actually unfolded is a bit different than what would usually occur with that position. So there is currently external funding going to it, but this is sort of a, a, a different approach. And usually it would be funded by municipal tax envelope dollars. The director position, the admin assistant position and the communication specialist position would be funded by municipal dollars. I'm getting a text from our Director of Finance that says both. So this year it's a bit of both. We did shuffle it around a little bit to meet the, the demands of the 2020 budget.
Go ahead.
So technically that position then is in normal year would be through the tax. So if we were to pursue like communications manager's position, would you see then that position falling under that communications manager? Like to me, like if the municipality is funding one position, like to me, wouldn't you think that would work together? Or am I out in that field?
Mr. Chair, through to Counselor Keller, MP. So this, what you're asking is kind of global questions that I started by exploratory work on this before, whether we could simply move the position to a different location and have the duties spread across the organization and, and how does that work? And then plus, I guess what we're dealing with now, with that position showing its ability to work across the organization and produce some extra material. So just to start with that position, as you duly noted, is part communication stuff, which is a lot of it isn't so much communications as it's producing materials. So the brochures and the pamphlets you see coming out of CFS and the postings on the website. So not communications, proper communication, but sort of that, that sort of subset of communication materials, I guess. And secondly, that the position is partly that, but also largely administrative. So a lot of that administrative type function has been set aside during the pandemic that has now piled up. So there's a bunch So there's a bunch of undone work. So it's kind of a misnomer by calling it communications because it's largely administrative stuff. So that stuff was parked and now is growing in a pile that is causing some stress over there. So we can't just keep doing this is part of it. So it's that ability to create the materials you saw, the posters, the stickers, the Facebook posts and knowing how to operate all that stuff and being in with that individual's past role in the community intuitive of knowing what the community might need when inability to be able to time the posts when they go out automatically has been amazing. So it's been a real benefit to us. But now to, to say, well, there's a taste of what that can do. This is what a communications role looks like. And then we simply that position will go back doing their work and it's targeted to that audience. It's not really like certainly we could still access that position if that individual stays with that material creation function, but not necessarily much more. Because there is such a need for that particular part of the organization to, to produce that material to engage their audience. It, everything you're asking is things that I've definitely thought about. But the deeper I got, the less that I saw an easy switch. But at the first, I was in exactly that same place, yes.
Councilor Butler and then Councilor McGrath.
So I feel like council has expressed in a number of ways over a fairly long period of time, a desire to see a higher level of communications in the community. I think the organization has responded well in these past few months. And we've expressed a desire to see something like that level of communication work continue. And this is administration's recommendation for how that should move forward. That being a coordinator level position in legislative services. I feel like the conversation about whether that position should or perhaps might sit at a different place in the organization is a valid one, but one that is better held honestly down the road. I think we can afford to take this one step at a time. Because to suggest that we should place it elsewhere in the organization, for example, as a direct report, really is the beginning of a conversation about reorganization with the, in the organization. I myself am not really comfortable having that right now because the one piece of that that I know will be different when we get there is that the C O to which that report would report will not be the one sitting here today. So to me, to discuss placing it elsewhere in the organization is a conversation for down the road. If we accept the recommendation as it is, that doesn't prevent us from making an organizational change in future to move it elsewhere into the organization, into a management level or something else. It also doesn't prevent us from considering how we fund it. If we commit to this decision, I think we commit ourselves to thirteen and a half thousand of new funding for this year. But it is mentioned here in the report that there's still a conversation that can be had about ultimately whether funding that position really amounts to some reorganization of how dollars are allocated within the organization. So those are both really important discussions, but maybe discussions that are better held over the next few months as we approach both the organization of the organization in conjunction with new C O. And also as we approach ongoing budget rather than just this issue. So Council McGrath's question was, does council have an appetite to consider changing this request to allocate that position elsewhere? For myself, no, not really, not now. I'm in support of, of enabling administration to continue the higher level of communication that we've seen. I think we've seen good results. We've pointed out that there are some conversations that maybe we should have around, for example, how deep do we want to go and or how far down the social media road? Again, conversations that we can have. But reorg and ongoing budget considerations may be down the road. It's my thoughts.
Thank you, Council Butler, for that informative input. Council McGrath is next.
Well, thank you for that, Councilor Butler. I certainly agree with all of the points that you make. That there is a greater conversation that is needed in the next few months. And that is on the organization as a whole and budgetary concerns for the organization as a whole. That being said, and with the short timeline that we have before us, before the year 2021 is here, I'm curious if this would be more appropriately contracted out for the remainder of 2020 and revisited as a municipal decision at the council level and where we fit this position into the organizational structure when we have a new C O, when we have the opportunity to speak more broadly about the organization's structure in the future. And maybe that thirteen and a half thousand dollars versus hiring a position for the community right now would be better spent in contracting that, that out. And I just, I don't want to defer, I don't push this down the road. Communications is something that I have been very, very clear that we have been falling behind on as an organization and as a community, and we need to move forward. I, I'm just very particular and specific about the way in which we move forward is, is a decision for, for long term. And I'm more comfortable making a long-term decision in the next few months, but also achieving our goals for transparency and open and honest government now.
Thank you. Excuse me, thank you, Councilor McGrath. Ms. Nodon, you have a response?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono. And it is a bit of a response to Councilor McGrath's last, last comment, but also a bit of, of an opening or something for council to consider between now and next week is between a contractor, a coordinator, a unionized position or a management position. You currently have a communications manager. It is half of my job description. Essentially what happened when the administrative officer retired and we moved into legislative services, I took on legislative services, but didn't really drop any of my previous responsibilities. And the, the sort of input level or services you get from this management position currently is the, is the approval of messaging, the political acumen of what to release and when not to release or to release it later or what words to choose and sort of this more fine-tuned high-level input on, on the communications front. And it, what we're lacking is the technical capability of putting it out there. However, if a communications manager position is of appeal to council and you wish to go that way, I will happily give up half of my workload. There is no question about it. We are very busy and I care more that the, the needs of the organization are met than how, how we structure to get there. Having that said, a contractor position for a three-month term represents quite a bit of work on our end to define and activate and supervise and actively monitor what's happening. It's sort of a day-to-day approach. I am in communication with our current communication specialist on a daily basis. And managing a contractor in that sense is, is something that could prove to be difficult. It would be an option for the rest of 2020, but how we can effectively manage that internally is, is a concern of mine, certainly. So however council wants to approve it, I think we've had the service level discussion. That I think there's a recognition for the need, how it is addressed is entirely up to council at this point. This is our best shot at what we think we need administratively to make it happen. But again, as long as the services get provided, that's sort of my ultimate outcome. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilor Demora.
I appreciate all of that. And the more we've discussed this and get more information, the more understanding we are the needs and the requirements of that. And you know, I want to make sure that the the community's needs are addressed. And I think that what we've been observing is, is a progress forward. And I appreciate all the assistance and any extra work everybody's been putting in. So the way we've been moving is more of what I'd like to see personally. So having said that, I mean, if we have to work within what's presented here, I'm just not sure that I'm completely convinced on the details of the position. And I think that when we go out and we put out job postings that they have unique job descriptions to their, to their position. I think right now what we do is what we have presented to us are possibilities of the role, and I'd like to see something a little bit more concrete and what that position would require. I don't mean to get too far into the semantics of it. But if we're going to be voting on allocating some funding towards that, I want to know what we're funding, not just possibilities of what the position could look like, but what the actual position would be. I think that would, that makes sense.
Thank you for that, Council Demora. Ms. Nodon, you have a response?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono through the Councilor Demora. I would just like to indicate that we haven't come up with a job description yet because we don't want to put the work in if the position's not approved essentially, right? So the chicken and egg situation perhaps, but and, and items like qualifications required for the type of duties listed. And, and I do believe that is a, an administrative matter is why this hasn't come to council yet.
Thank you. Can we conclude this matter? It'll come up for a decision at next Tuesday's council meeting. First day of September, right? Next item, eight point four Jasper pro, Jasper Day proclamation, council item, I believe. Councilor Demora.
Well, I, I brought this up at the last regular meeting as notice and requested to have it here today because I'm not the best wordsmith. And I do thank the ladies for helping me out in, okay, Ms. Byrne for adjusting some of my grammatical construction there. But put it here to discuss that council to see if there's any changes to the structure of it, what it entails, the whole meaning behind it, anything like that.
Thank you. Any comments? Discussion is we discussed this, whether we're counselors are in support of this or we've not really brought that up, have we? Any comments, are we? I, I think it's a great idea. I'd support it. I, like I say, I'm not proclamations and the English of the wording is not my specialty. But I'd certainly be supporting Council McGrath.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono, and thank you, Oda, for bringing us and for all of your passion on the subject. I certainly support the idea of bringing an event in a day called Jasper Day. Sorry, I shouldn't have said event. I, I support the, the idea of bringing a proclaimed day to Jasper to celebrate its residents and, and to celebrate specifically after the, the high season. And I see no harm. I certainly think that it's optimistic and positive in nature and that there's nothing that I can see that would be detrimental. It's, it's commanding something to bring more unity and more positivity, especially this year during a time when anything that anyone can do to bring optimism and people together, safely, of course, is certainly something that I would support. So thank you very much for all of your work on this and for the duration. I believe you said 10 years is, is the timeframe that you've been thinking about a Jasper Day proclamation. So I'm in support of the Jasper Day proclamation on September 1st.
Thank you, Councilor McGrath. So where do we go from here? Put on next week's agenda officially proclaim it? Council Butler.
Thank you. I've been, spent some time looking over our proclamation policies and our administrative, our proclamation policy. It is actually the proclamation letter of support and flag raising request policy. And the administrative procedures associated with that. There's nothing in our proclamation policy per se to prevent us from declaring a Jasper Day now and into the future. But the spirit, in my view, of the wording in the policy is two things. One is mostly intended to respond to requests. I think the idea is requests coming from the community, though to be clear, one of the criteria in our policy is it could be an initiative of the municipality. So fair enough, I, I don't have a problem with that. However, I think the intent is for proclamation. Primarily the intent is for a proclamation for the year for a day in, in this case. I struggle with this council proclaiming Jasper Day for the next decade. I would be comfortable if it was a proclamation for this year. It can always be done again. But I struggle. It seems a little bit reactive to me. Yes, this year is a difficult year. And we all see reason to maybe designate a day to take a breath and celebrate, if nothing else, the end of the summer season. But I'm going to find it a little difficult to get my head around proclaiming this from here forward as a permanent fixture in the community.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Council Butler, Council Demora.
And I appreciate those comments because it's, it's an interesting way to, to look at it as well. And you know, and I go back and I look at, you know, our heritage rodeo weekend that we used to have on a certain date. Folk Fest used to be on a certain date. Those, those have changed. And I think that if we set something, it's set up, you know, for the future. And if the community or council of the future wants to change the date, if we make it annual, then you know, leave it up to them with adjusting to the times. We've seen Jasper in January bounce all over the place, different weekends. And we just adjust to, you know, how the, the market is or what's going on in the community. So I'm, I'm okay with going forward with this. It's pretty easy. I don't think we need to get into in-depth in what future ramifications are going to be. If we look back at 2008, 2009 and growing out of that, when we lost all our, most of our our tour bus business and stuff like that, it took a while for it to come back and it didn't happen overnight. I don't have a crystal ball, but you know, speculation is kind of stating the same thing. We're not going to be pulling out of this. And I admit, September has been a busy month in the past. But in the future, maybe for the next couple of years, it won't be as busy as we've experienced it. And we may not experience this year. So I, I think it's pretty safe to, to just go ahead with this. And if it is a reactive thing, so what? You know what? We need something to look forward to. And a lot of people have had stressful years. A lot of people have had busy summers. And I think that celebrating Jasper is a unique thing to us and be something, it should be something to embrace. When I was, not to make this too long, I was talking to somebody in the community who thought it was a great idea and made reference to Saint Jean Baptiste Day, which is celebrated by Francophones across Canada. And initially that, that day, Saint John the Baptist Day was to, to, it was a Christian celebration to celebrate the birth of Saint John the Baptist, from what I understand. But sometime in the 1800s, there was a business person from what I read in Montreal who was invited to, to go to a Saint Patrick's Day party. And then thought, well, you know what? We should, we should celebrate our Francophone heritage and said, you know, like, let's pick a day to celebrate our, our culture and settled on Saint Jean Baptiste Day, which is Saint John the Baptist, which is the 24th of June. And that's celebrated every year across Canada and maybe other areas in North America. So I thought that was pretty interesting. So sometimes you don't really need that direct parallel. And I think we just pick a day. It, the, the third Saturday proposed revolves around the fall equinox, which marks the end of summer and the beginning of fall. And that transition, as I said in, wrote in the proclamation, that it's a good opportunity for us to, to, you know, celebrate our successes of the summertime, our culture and our diversity in working together within the community. And I think it's a good thing. Thank you. in working together within the community. And I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. So beyond the agenda, Councilor Callahan, P. Go ahead.
I have to admit, I wasn't here for the meeting where it was discussed, but this weekend I actually have talked to quite a few residents in the community. And they think it's a great idea. They just think and one person said to me, can I decorate my house? Now I went, you can do whatever you want. It's Jasper Day. And I was quite surprised at people just thought it was a good idea. So I think try it for this year. Either the community will embrace it or they won't. It's not going to harm anything.
Okay, Council Butler.
Thanks, I'll just
reiterate that because Council Demora didn't really address my point and Council Keller, her MP just said, try it this year. And that's what I say. Where I struggle again is we could proclaim it every year. I'd be more comfortable sitting here proclaiming it again next year than I would if it doesn't seem to go anywhere, finding that we have as one council who sits here for another 16 months or whatever it is, having made a declaration that really we have no way to ensure any longevity here. So I just reiterate that my only point really was I'm probably comfortable if we declare the third Saturday of this coming September as being Jasper Day. But struggle a little at considering myself to have an adequate lens to the community to state right now that it should be Jasper Day on into the future.
Thank you for that, Council Demora.
You know, one of one of us as councillors stated a while back that why do we have to overcomplicate things? Why can't we just make a decision and move forward? And I think that we're over complicating this. It is so easy to do and we're not, it's it's not this thing that you're nailing people down to something you're it's something positive for the community to look forward to every year. And if people want to change it down the road, I I think that it's just, it's such a simple concept. Pick a day, let's make a decision. It this year won't be a year that will be easy to have any sorts of festivals or celebrations, but the easiest ones that are attainable through social distancing can be had. And if things change next year, then you have an opportunity to bring this back to the table year after year. Seems a little cumbersome and silly to me. I think, you know, no offense, but it's just easy to just do it, but the let the community try it out for a year and then think what they can do better next year and so on and so forth.
We thank you, Council Demora, for your enthusiasm for this. But I think we've said enough and we will move on. Item eight point five cardboard collection. Council of the board, I think you have some public comments on that.
Yeah, that's fine. I just I don't think that a lot of people in the business community are aware of this. I've I've tried to bring it up with several people and and let people know. You know, it has been on the council agenda for a few times already and and all the points are there within the proposal. So I just want to draw more attention to it and I wasn't sure if if there were other options that we potentially discuss, particularly in communication that we wanted to have in there. If not, then I'm okay with it.
Thank you for that. I've I've undertaken a little bit to provide some assistance to administration. So in, as you guys know, I do lots of cardboard. And so as I progressed in the collection or the the gathering for collection, I took a series of pictures I sent to to our public worksman, Mr. Greathead, and he acknowledged them that, you know, it's a great, great example setting for cardboard. Sorting preparation or whatever. And I think that if it was done that way, he would probably continue. But that discussion will certainly be evolving in the near future. Council Demora.
Well, you know what? I would like to urge businesses to start practicing it because if, you know, once we make the decision on it, it's it's kind of like the hammers falling and then we've got penalties in place and things like that proposed anyway. So, you know, even though the word's been out there and we've been talking to people, there hasn't really been a lot of progression to break down boxes. And I want to to encourage that. I've been trying to do it at work, but when you're competing with a bunch of other businesses around you that are just piling things up, it it gets a little frustrating sometimes. So it's all about communicating and working together to to for a positive outcome.
So is that going to be an assignment for communication and
Maybe.
Obviously. Thank you for that. Okay, let's move on. Council McGrath, sorry.
Thank you, Councilor Jono. Sorry, my apologies. There's a brief delay from the moment I raise my hand to the moment you see it on this screen there. My question administration, do we have a way other than walking around from business to business in the downtown core? Do we have a way to say email all businesses who hold a business license in the municipality of Jasper? What are our communication tools that we currently have with businesses?
Ms. Nodden will gladly answer that.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Jono through to Council McGrath. Our business licensing list is of a very high value to all kinds of other organizations who would really want to get their hands on it. But there are some some FOIP requirements there. And anyway, what I'm getting at is how we're set up when we collect that information hinders our ability to to do a lot of things with it. So so to your to your question, yes, we could pull every single email address from our business licensing list. However, it is not sorted either by service type or area, or there's sort of no criteria assigned to to that data in the database. But also a concept that we tend to struggle with is the purpose for which we collected that information is not necessarily to communicate to businesses with, right? So there's it's a bit of a complex situation there. But 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 yes, so technically we do have that information. We have faced some challenges in sharing it with other organizations from a FOIP perspective, but then for our own purpose, it's a bit different. Whether it's appropriate to do it or not is is a different question. Yes. So generally, how how we rely, how we communicate to businesses is generally through our partners and not necessarily using our own database and for the reasons I just outlined. But having that said, I mean, it's a it's an area of ongoing demand or concern, if you will. And depending on the nature of the information to be communicated, we could justify using it, but we usually don't is the answer.
Thank you for that. We could change the consent form on the application to include that and the business application, sorry, to include that. Because I think it'd be valuable. You know, our partners have limited membership. This is an item that has to reach all businesses. Councilor Demora.
Well, I like your, or sorry, I have to keep in the practice of your chair through to Council McGrath. Thank you very much for bringing this up. And and I think that's a very thoughtful thing to do. Yeah, it'd be interesting to, if you know, speaking to councillors, your nose idea of of a consent form, if if we had a database with the understanding that, you know, we're collecting your emails so that when we have to express some new information or or service changes that we can do that. And I don't see the necessity the necessity to share that database with anybody else, just to have that for particular municipal uses. So great idea.
Thank you. Enough. Thank Council Butler.
All of that is true and important, and we have to communicate. But we have to decide what it is that we need to communicate. And we need to decide if we're going to stay in the business of collecting cardboard. So I don't think we should. This has evolved over time, the situation where we collect cardboard, we don't charge. It costs the taxpayer money hand over foot. We find that by in a way, honestly, kind of overstepping our commitments and providing service that we're making the situation worse because we we, in a sense, have created a scenario where some businesses feel that somehow they have the right to fling their cardboard out in the alley and it will just go away. I don't think we should be in the business of collecting cardboard. We don't collect used cooking oil. We don't collect bottles and cans. We don't collect the big plastic laundry chemical containers. We don't collect dairy crates. We don't collect old clothes. I just listed off a bunch of things that are recycled and we don't collect them. We in hindsight, maybe never really meant to get into the business of collecting cardboard. I think we have a responsibility absolutely to, you know, bundle bail and find a way to make it go away from the community because we can't have it going into the landfill. So there we have a responsibility. But we're way out in front now of making a decision of we're way out in front. If we make a decision now to stop collecting cardboard in 2021, we have three months, four months ahead of us to communicate that and for businesses to adjust. So I think we should remember that that or that is a decision that we need to address. The communication we will do unquestionably. The communication will happen. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Let's move on.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciated that breakdown. That that was very intelligently delivered and
Let's let's move along here. We're we have another meeting shortly. Item nine correspondence for information consideration. We've got that in the agenda package under new business. I said masks for Jasper the Bear. It was meant to add a little light to the to the subject. And somebody suggested that we contact the Quilters Guild who would gladly make one. I I don't know anybody in Quilters Guild, so if anybody does know and can pass that on, that would be much appreciated. But I think it's a good idea. And I I posted on Facebook and of course I got lots of comments back. Number 11 council representation on various boards and upcoming meetings. We have Council Keller MP.
I just want to give you a quick update on the business walk that Community Futures is doing on Monday, December 20, September 21st at 9:30 a.m. Council McGrath has RSVP'd. Our MLA Martin Long has RSVP to attend and Joe Soroka, our MP, will also be attending. And I will be attending also. So if any other councillor would like to attend, can you just either RSVP to me or to Nancy Robbins at Community Futures? And that's it.
Thank you, Council McGrath, please.
Thank you, Councilor. Would you know, just a point of order, we missed new business.
We did go through new business, went very quickly, mask for Jasper the Bear.
Oh, sorry. I wasn't sure that we were on an agenda, but I do have new business.
Did you have a presentation on council? Your representation on boards? Council McGrath.
This does not apply to council representation on various boards and upcoming meetings. However, it does apply to new business. I am curious to start a conversation on a social media policy for staff and council members and wanted to initiate a discussion for the next few months to have a policy created and used by the municipality of Jasper. And a second item of new business that I'm interested in discussing today is the virtual AUMA. We had previously decided that we would not participate in AUMA. But now that it is announced that it will be virtual and that it's $100 registration fee and it is listed in our upcoming events, I thought it was of value to discuss as council to decide whether or not we would be participating and how how that would work, have budgetary concerns with AUMA attendance.
Anymore? We're on to the item 11 council representation on various boards. Anymore? Thank you. And number 12 upcoming events tomorrow, August 26, we have a Zoom conversation. Zoom participation for a community conversation. Council McGrath, do you have anything to add to that? Council Callahan P., you will be attending. Through Zoom, thank you. Upcoming September 21st, Community Futures Business Walk. Time TBC. So what's what's these abbreviations there? Please define. Pardon me? Confirm. TBA, TBC, TBD. Travel British Columbia.
It'll be September 21 at 9:30.
9:30 a.m. So this is a business walk. So it starts where?
Jasper Employment Center. That's where we'll all group at 9:30.
So the meeting begins at Jasper Employment Center at 9:30 on September 21st. Thank you very much. Council McGrath already talked about the virtual AUMA convention. And any other comment, participation inquiry? I see you all mindful of the clock. Thank you very much. So at this time, I will call for item number 13 and adjournment, Councilor Demora. Show.
I move to adjourn.
Show hands, all favor. Thank you very much. The meeting is adjourned at 1:23. We're reconveniencing at 2 o'clock here for our HR meeting. Thank you very much.